Okay. We do not have presentations tonight, no appointments. Next, we have a set of minutes. Minutes from July 15 and regular minutes from the July 22.
Madam Chair.
Also move that's true.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Frikazi, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum. All in approval for the minutes from our regular meeting of July 15 and July 22. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our consent agenda. And Council, I want to bring to your attention item G. It's, we're asked to pull that item per the requestor.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Morris. And second, by Councilman Frazier for the approval of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item is a public hearing. Mr. Crowe.
Yeah. Through the chair, if you just give me one moment to pull up the presentation. Our first public hearing tonight is PZR-19-0005, which is a rezoning request of Lasser Road Mikvah to rezone 0.49 acres of land from RT attached single-family to R4 single-family residential. Property located at 22960 West 11 Mile Road. There's an existing single-family house at the northeast corner of Bell Road and 11 Mile. Existing conditions. The current zoning is residential townhome. Proposed zoning is R4, which is consistent with the synagogue to the west. And the future land use plan designates this site for low-density, multiple-family. So, this is a three-parter, but we have to take each one separately. The first piece, again, is just the consideration of rezoning from RT to R4. And then, we'll have a separate public hearing on the special use, request for religious use on the property. And then finally, I would ask that you consider the site plan portion of this as, after the special land use public hearing. And before you go to open it up to the public, I'm going to ask the applicant if they want to say anything just on the rezoning itself, to come up and say that now. Do you want to wait until the special use? Okay. I think her statement would be more appropriate under the special use public hearing.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to PZR-19-0005, please come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald Peal, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I just wanted to say that this was discussed in the study session, and I think for the purpose of the viewing audience, you need to go into a little bit more detail and talk about exactly what this is and the spiritual or religious significance so that people can understand. Residents are starting to feel like when you discuss it in the study session and you bring it to the viewing audience, that you're not giving enough detail, and it seems like these agenda items and public hearings are being rushed through. So, can you go back and give a little bit more detail and explain what is a religious bath? And how it works? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council?
If I may, through the chair, I can answer that question. I'm familiar with this.
If I could, through the chair, to Councilman Mandelbaum.
Wait until the special use.
We're only discussing the merits of the rezoning itself.
Okay.
If you would like me to read the permitted uses of what is being proposed, I'd be happy to do that, but it would be inappropriate to talk about the special use prior to the public hearing on the special use.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. We'll answer that later. Okay. Council?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PZR-19-0005.
Support.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilman Brightwell in favor of the rezoning request. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1706.
Support. Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Morris for the introduction of ordinance number 1706. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Through the chair, our next item is PSLU-19-0007, which is a special use request of Lasser Road Mikvah to allow for religious use on single-family property located at 22960 West 11 Mile Road. Again, it's the same property that you considered your approval on the rezoning. It's the northeast corner of Bell Road and West 11 Mile, and this is to allow for religious use on single-family residential property. And with that, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and make an introduction of what the potential use is prior to opening up to the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. Please give us your name and business address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sheri Levy. I live at 22334 Chats Ford Circuit Street, Southfield, Michigan, 48034.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me speak this evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. The Mikvah Board is very excited and anxious to begin building our much-needed Mikvah. As you know, our previous Mikvah was demolished along with the old Akiva Hebrew Day School building, which is now called the Farber Day School, and our community has not had a Mikvah, a most essential day-to-day institution. Jewish life without a Mikvah in walking distance to our residents gives an unnecessary hardship to the members of our community. In fact, without a Mikvah, it is possible that a potential new community member may have second thoughts about settling in Southfield and would move to Oak Park where they have a very large, established Mikvah. The Oak Park Mikvah is over four miles walk from Southfield, which is very difficult to do in the wintertime, to walk close to 10 miles round trip to use the Mikvah. Building this most essential institution will entice more young families to move to our community and in turn increase the appeal and diversity and most likely, the property value in our neighborhood. The design of the structure is congruent with the style of homes in our Southfield community. It is a small, 1,400 square foot, unimposing, mid-century modern structure that will only have very light traffic flow and quiet visits. The nature of the ritual bath is very private and intimate. It architecturally complements the neighboring shards at a campus and will complete the look to create a welcoming entryway to Bell Road from 11 Mile Road and Northwestern Highway Service Drive. With all the new developments and beautification projects in our city of Southfield that has been initiated by you, the City Council, the City Council, Mayor Ken Seiver, from Red Poll Park on Northwestern Highway Service Drive, from moving the boy and the bear to the library, which, by the way, my husband, who's lived in Oak Park and Southfield his entire life, who used to go to Northland Mall to see that statue, and he is thrilled to hear that you saved it and moved it to the library for everyone to see. And to the fantastic wide sidewalks that have been put all around the city, we believe that our Mikvah not only will provide a necessary service for the thriving Jewish community here, but will also continue to add to the charm and allure of living in Southfield.
Thank you. You can have a seat. I'll now declare that the public hearing is open. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to PSLU-19-007, the special use request, please come forward.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. Terry, is it possible to put the picture up, the schematic of what the facility would look like? Do you have that?
We can, but we also are going to do the site plan after this.
Okay.
So, we're, again, I just want to remind the council, we're just here on the merits of the special use.
Mm-hmm.
And then we will talk about the site plan next.
Okay. Please give us your name and business address for the record.
Of course. Noah Levy, 22334 Chatsford Circuit, Southfield, Michigan, 48034. I just want to say that, just to give you a little context about the importance of a Mikvah in an Orthodox Jewish community, Sheri and I moved to this community from West Bloomfield in 2001. And at that time, our synagogue probably had maybe 100 families as members. And, you know, I think the word got out about how amazing our community was, and people started to move in. There were, when we moved in, we had five small children. There were very few other small children in our community. And, you know, here we are about 19 years later, 18 years later, we've, our synagogue now has over 170 families, and it's critical for Orthodox community. When Orthodox community builds its institutions, there's three critical institutions that it has to build. It has to build a school, which we have, we have in Oak Park-Southfield area. It has to have a synagogue, which of course, we have at the Young Israel of Southfield on Lasser Road. And it really needs a Mikvah. Now, the Mikvah is a, is an institution that is used for family purity, to address what you were asking before. And when, when husband and wife want to be together, the Mikvah is requi, the woman goes to the Mikvah and she dips in the Mikvah, and then she can be with her husband. So, it happens on a certain day, and when that day happens, it's supposed to happen right away. So, Sheri was talking about walking, and we don't use a car on Friday night. So, if the Mikvah night is Friday night, and the woman would have to walk five miles each way, obviously she would miss that night, and it's not a, it's not considered to be something that's desirable, and it really takes away from the allure of our community. I just want to say that by our being able to build a Mikvah in Southfield, in our Southfield community, it will be a feather in our cap. And it will definitely help bring more, more interested parties to our community and help build Southfield to, you know, help build Southfield and make our community stronger and healthier. Thank you.
Pamela Gerald Peal, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number again is 248-346-0439. Well, since it was explained like that, I can understand the significance of it based on religion. I guess I would be in favor of it because it's something new that I learned, and I think that a community should have things that address the people that live in that community. So, if that's one of the spiritual components, to be husband and wife, I guess I'm in favor of it. But I didn't get an opportunity to ask you why the above required an ordinance to establish it. Is this a mixed use? What type of zoning is this? And why did it require to rezone the ordinance? Like, why did, why did you need to rezone it? It's residential. I didn't get all the info for that.
Okay.
If you could go back, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
And the clock is now working. It wasn't working a minute ago, so is it just working for me, or is it working for everybody that's going to speak?
It was working for Pam, too.
It's working for everyone.
No, because when she spoke, it stayed at three minutes.
Oh, no. She was, she's the project. She's the.
Oh, okay. Wonderful. I didn't know.
That's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else?
I'm in favor of it if I didn't say anything.
Okay. Please come to the mic and give your name, no, the lady behind you. And give us your name and address. And you'll have three minutes, please.
My name is Esther Posner. I live on Tavistock Trail, and I've lived in my house for 45 years. And before that, I lived in the Tannen and Greenfield area on the Southfield side for five years. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Mikvah for our community, our Jewish community, and I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm an immigrant myself. I came to the United States when I was 10 years old. I'm a Holocaust survivor. And one of the things I've done in my retirement is look into my background and decided to find out what my family was like in Europe. My parents came from Germany, and I was born in the Netherlands, in Amsterdam. And I did a lot of research into the towns where they lived and what their Jewish community was like. And in those days when my, my family moved into the towns they lived in, in Germany, they had to go to the head of the, like, the city council and ask for permission to move into the town. And there were four things as a Jewish community, as a Jewish resident, that they needed. And the first thing was a place to bury their dead, because if we're talking about the 16th and 1700s, children died at a young age, and women died in childbirth, so they needed a separate place to bury their dead. Synagogue was not a problem because they would meet in a living room, and that would be fine. But the other thing that they did ask for was to build a Mikvah. And I have, from the town that my parents came from, the floor plan of the Mikvah that was built there many, many years ago. So, this is part of our, of what we've always had in our lives. And we did have a Mikvah in the old Akiva building, and that was torn down recently, about a year or two ago. And that was for our use for Mark, for our community, and we don't have that anymore. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Crowe?
Yeah. Through the chair, you do have a recommended resolution. I'd just like to highlight, there's nine items, number one and number nine.
Okay.
That this special land use is subject to the approval of the rezoning request, which was introduced and approved but needs to be enacted at your next month's meeting. And then number nine, the hours of operation shall be limited to sundown to 11:30 PM seven days a week.
Okay. Okay. Counsel?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Frikazi.
A move for the approval of PSLU-19, 19007. Is that the correct one?
Support.
PSLU-19, yes. 0007.
Madam Chair, support that.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frikazi, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of PSLU-19-0007. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And if I could, since the site plan is part and parcel to the special land use, I'd like to introduce this at this time. So, this, the final piece of this is the PSP-19-0006, which is a site plan review request of Lasser Road Mikvah to demolish the existing house on site and to construct a 1,400 gross square foot Mikvah, or ritual bath, with associated parking and other onsite amenities. Property located at 22960 West 11 Mile Road. Again, this is the same parcel that's been discussed. And I'm going to stop here with the proposed elevations and turn it over to the architect to go through the building design, the green infrastructure, and then the site plan issues.
And sir, once again, would you give us your name and business address for the record?
Of course.
Thank you.
Richard Wilson, 28105 Greenfield Road, Southfield, Michigan. It's 28106 or 7, I believe. And I am feeling better, so I have had some Tylenol. Architecturally, I mean, this is, this is one of those one-in-a-lifetime opportunities. We feel that its location allows us to create a very sensitive, I mean, we're sensitive, being sensitive to the neighborhood, not only in scale, but in material. It's a great opportunity. It's great location on the corner of Bell Road and 11 Mile. Emphasizing the material use, natural materials, stone, a fiber cement board which gives the illusion of being cedar, so very light, warm colors. Mrs. Levy alluded to that it's, it's a private ritual experience, and we felt that the site itself should accommodate those needs. What we don't see here on, on the site plan is the additional attention to the retention pond in the front, so we would have more landscaping on the 11 Mile roadside, more wild grasses, more color. And along the east side, we're also suggesting a rain garden to provide a little bit more separation between the adjacent neighbor. As you can see, there are cherry blossom trees, bushes. The intent in five to 10 years is potentially to add an 800 square foot addition.
But they would have to, through the chair, come back for that?
Okay.
Additional approval? And we also talked about limiting the number of parking spaces based on this first phase.
Correct.
And then, I don't know if you'd like to make any more comments on the elevations?
The white gray color is representative of stone, and the darker, warm reddish-brown color is representative of cedar lap siding.
Okay. Thank you.
So, again, this is not a public hearing.
No. You can be seated, sir.
But just to, just to answer the previous public comment, the RT zoning does not permit religious uses, and that's therefore why it had to be rezoned to R4, single-family, which does permit religious uses. And we would, again, we have a recommended resolution, which includes the approval of the previous rezoning and special land use, and then our standard site plan requirements are, have been listed for your consideration.
Okay. Madam Chair. I had a question, Terry. I didn't see, this is new construction.
That's correct.
I didn't see any bike racks, but they?
They, they are required to have a bike rack.
I didn't see, okay.
And it is in our, it is in our standards, as well as a pedestrian connection to the main walk. They are adding, actually, during the recent reconstruction of 11 Mile, the sidewalk was extended, but this was, this is all-new sidewalk that they're proposing going northbound on Bell Road.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
Yep. I'm familiar with this. Mr. Mandelbaum gave me an unofficial education on this about a year ago, with respect to the concept. That was a question I forgot to ask in the study session, you know, in our previous meeting. This will be by appointment only, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Yes. Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Was this advertised to the 350 feet?
That's correct.
Did you get any comments from any of the neighbors?
Well, we received, as I said, 14 to 16 positive letters. I haven't cross-checked them with the neighbors. I believe one or two neighbors did come, and Ms. Levy did canvass the neighborhood, and we did not get any negative comments from anybody.
Okay. Is this considered a business, or?
No. It's, it's classified as a religious use, so it would be classified as a not, non-profit type of use. And it's not limited just to the Mikvah?
For me?
The rezoning would allow, the rezoning and the special land use would allow religious uses, and then the, the site plan and the conditions of special use limited to the Mikvah.
Does this require separation from the rest of the, from the neighboring properties?
There's no, as I pointed out, the only waiver that would be required is the waiver to the north, because we asked them to push the building further back from the corner for corner clearance, and also to be consistent with the, the existing row townhouses on 11 Mile. The, the property to the north has a driveway and a garage before the house, so we don't see that as, as a problem. But the 50-foot buffering is part of that setback requirement that they need a waiver for.
Okay. I just don't want, you know, after it's built, neighbors coming in saying, oh, you know, there should have been a wall or buffer or something. I'm trying to prevent things from happening that.
We're sensitive to that as well.
Okay. All right. I mean, I like it. I, I think it's a good use of the property, necessary use of the property, but I just don't want, you know, how the, sometimes the best intentions end up with a.
Right. But while we're on that subject, I'm going to ask the architect to get up on, just talk about the, whether there's the fencing or screening requirements, or existing versus proposed?
So, the existing fencing currently is a vinyl white fence that is on the north and on the east side of the property. The city requires six feet of masonry, and we are asking that we are able to maintain the vinyl in lieu of putting a heavier, solid separation between the two.
So, it's, as part of the site plan, you have that prerogative to adopt the more residential-style screening versus a masonry wall? And I think, in keeping with the character of the, since it's an existing fence as well, that we would recommend you approving the site subject to that fencing.
Okay. As, as long as it blends in with the design and looks handsome.
And, and they would be required to maintain or repair it if it was damaged or needed that work.
Sure.
But we, we were, we spent a lot of time, I give them a lot of credit, this is probably maybe fourth or fifth iteration, where we tried to come up with a very sensitive design that fits in with the neighborhood.
Okay. Miss Taylor? I just want to know what's going to happen to all the people that want to put yard signs up there. I mean, that's a constant thing, when, during election season.
Right.
The wall-to-wall yard signs.
Mr. Mayor?
To Mr. Frazier's point, the neighbor to the immediate north on the corner. To Mr. Frazier's point, the neighbor to the immediate north on the corner did contact my office. They're not, they're not familiar with the Mikfa. I explained what it was. They wrote back that they were absolutely fine with it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I am too. I just don't want anyone to come in later on.
Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Yep. Mr. Frazier reminded me that this is an election year. So what is the completion date and/or timing on this?
We would be looking at a completion date for the end of the year.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Saying none, are we ready to?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-six.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of PSP one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we have to go back to the public hearing.
That's correct.
We have another public hearing for a special assessment.
Good evening, everyone. So this is our step five and our final step in this special assessment process to install a streetlight at the corner of Greenfield Road and Stratford Drive. This special assessment, if you recall, was initiated by congregation Beth Tiffilo, which is located on Greenfield Road between Agnew Place and Shelley Street. This just happens to be the one intersection along the congregation's walking route that is not served by a nearby streetlight, just kind of a dark corner that the congregation is walking by. And a, a single-lot petition was submitted by this congregation, Beth Tiffilo, to have this installed. Their plan is to pay the cost of the installation upfront, and then a perpetual special assessment district for this one property will be set up to pay the estimated annual fee of a hundred and seventy-three dollars. That's for the operation and maintenance of the streetlight that is subject to change by DTE based upon their rates. And this is our final public hearing, and, and after the public hearing, the recommendation would be to adopt this special assessment resolution, and then authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the agreement with DTE to proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have anything else to add, Mr. Crowe, before I open the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing. I'd like to open it now to the public. Special Assessment Project SL one-one-five. Anyone that has, would like to make a comment regarding this project, please come forward.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box one-fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven-dash-zero-one-five-five. My telephone number's two-four-eight-three-four-six-zero-four-three-nine. My question is, when the, when the residents or people within a special assessed district approve it, you have an issue of the light bulbs. Who's responsible for changing those light bulbs? Several residents reached out to me a while ago, but I had other things that I was talking about, and they said that they paid for a special assessment in their area, but the bulbs were out. So whose responsibility is it to ensure and make sure that those lights are constantly working? And then, are the lights LED? That's my question.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Ervin Adelstein. I'm from two-four, two-two-five Greenfield Road. I'm a member and a board member of Beth Tiffilo Emmanuel Tikwa. I just wanna rate that it's very important to have that light for safety reasons. We do walk, especially on Friday nights, on holidays at night, from, from the house to the synagogue, and that corner is a dangerous corner, could be dangerous. Cars coming, they can't see us because it's very dark in that corner. So, that's, I'm here to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Frakazi?
I'm over the approval of SL one-one-five-one for the streetlight installation at Greenfield Road and Stratford Drive.
Okay, one moment, please. We had a question that I was gonna-
Yeah, I believe the city engineer can answer that. She's still here?
Do you want?
We have one question.
So the question about the maintenance of the streetlight, this streetlight is being put up by DTE and will be maintained and operated by DTE. So, streetlight outages, DTE has a page on their website that they can be reported, or if people can't find that easily enough, you can always contact our Public Works Department, and we will report that on our residents' behalf. We do, do, I couldn't speak to exactly how regular, because it's not my duty, but we do regularly drive around this city, maybe monthly after dark, to check streetlights throughout the entire city, so we try and keep an eye on that ourselves, as well as responding to complaints.
Thank you. Before we vote, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just to point out, even though it's a special assessment district, we're only talking about one light pole at this time. Correct?
Correct. One light bulb and one property specially assessed.
Thank you. Council, did you have any questions or comment before we vote?
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Frakazi.
You stopped him halfway through the motion.
I'm sorry.
Repeat my motion?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, that we approve and confirm the special assessment project SL one-one-five-one for the streetlight installation at Greenfield Road and Stratford Drive.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frakazi, supported by Mr. Frazier, for the approval of the special assessment project SL one-one-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have another Brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Board. The city staff is in receipt of a request from the South, from SF Community Renewal Corporation for their Brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment finance plan and the development and reimbursement agreement for the redevelopment of the former McKinley School located at one-eight-three-three-zero Washington, George Washington. The Brownfield Authority reviewed this project on August second and approved it, and we're here today, Councilman Mandelbaum is involved with a nonprofit. He has a short presentation, followed by the representative from the environmental company, PM Environmental. They also have a short presentation. We're requesting a public hearing for this project.
Thank you. As the council representative to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, I thought it would be appropriate for me to just give a quick, brief overview of the McKinley School project, as well as some of the things that we've been, we've been doing. So for example, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation was founded in nineteen-seventy-three, and they were trying to find ways to keep seniors happy in the city. So nineteen-seventy-seven, a brand-new one-hundred-and-sixty-two-unit senior apartment was developed, McDonald Tower, and then we, and then shortly after, two more projects were developed, River Park Place, which has a hundred-and-eighty-two units, as well as sixty-two additional family townhomes, and then Woodridge Apartments, which has ninety-eight units as well. In December of two thousand and fourteen, there was a development agreement to renovate McDonald Tower, River Park Place, in the tune of twenty million dollars. The renovations were completed and included all-new kitchen appliances, bathrooms, windows, doors, lightings, and interior finishes. Woodridge Apartments also has new interior finishes and kitchen appliances. All buildings have been renovated with updated mechanical systems, common spaces, security cameras, security patrols, electronic entry systems, as well as shuttle bus transportation that is private for them and is not for, does not affect the TOS program that we approved earlier today. And the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation remains committed to building quality communities and preserving access to affordable housing in our community. I'd also like to point out that when the nonprofit housing corporation began in nineteen-seventy-three, as part of their agreement with the city council at that time, it was requested by the city council to have a representative from the council on their board, as well as a city, someone from the city, which has generally been the city administrator. So, that is where my role comes in. I am appointed by the council president to sit on the board, as well as the city administrator. And the mayor as well is on the board of the Southfield Nonprofit, but however, he was appointed as a private citizen. When he resigned his seat from council, he resigned from the nonprofit board as well, and because one of his passions is housing and community revitalization, they, the board had asked him to re, to back on to the board to serve in that capacity, so his affiliation is as a citizen, not in a mayoral capacity. One of the things that we have in the city is, we are trying to have adaptive reuse of the surplus school buildings. So, a little history, in nineteen-sixty-nine, public, the Southfield Public Schools had over sixteen thousand students, and they were housed in twenty-six buildings. Fast forward, two thousand and eighteen, they have just under six thousand students, and half those buildings, thirteen. So, another history, in nineteen-seventy, the average number of persons living in each household was four, and today it's just under two, and we have a very aging population. Here's some additional graphs based on the census count that shows that our population of seniors is increasing, and unfortunately, or fortunately, we, we have slowed in the children area, which is causing a need for additional senior housing, and less school buildings. So, we, there are currently seven closed and empty school buildings in the Southfield School District. Five have had adaptive reuses, office buildings, daycare centers, TV studios, bus stations, private schools, and then there was one demolished, and just go through them. This is Braceletally, a nine-mile, was closed in two thousand and sixteen. We have Eisenhower School and Leonard School were both closed in two thousand and ten. Eisenhower did have a use for some time, but now it's vacant. Leonard School, I do know that there were a few interested parties in Leonard School, however, the remediation environmental, as well as the cost of the school, has made it very cost-prohibitive for many developers to come in and either reuse the school or even demolish it and build from scratch. You have Andy Lathrop School, that closed as a public school in nineteen-eighty, and then it had a charter school in it for a while that closed in two thousand and twelve, and that is, that is located in Lathrop Village, but it is a public school. And then you had the Bussy Center on Twelve Mile that closed in June of two thousand and seventeen. John Grace closed in nineteen-eighty, and then in nineteen-eighty-five, the school board transferred the building to the city of Southfield to use as a community center. That use had ended, has ended in May of two thousand and eighteen, and it's now a surplus property within the city. There are deed restrictions on the property that limit the use to recreation or a community center, and those were removed last May by the Board of Education. You also have McKinley School. It closed in nineteen-seventy-one, and the building was used as a service center for various public school departments until it was sold to a private entity in nineteen-eighty-three. It then continued its use as a private school and then a charter school, and has since been closed since two thousand and fifteen, and is currently sitting vacant. I'd also like to point out, if anyone's familiar with the property, there's also many trailers on the property, not in this picture, that the school used that are also, again, sitting vacant, that are filled with mold and have other environmental problems. The Southfield City Council, your Honorable Body, approved solicitation of bids to purchase John Grace in May of last year, and it was on the market for one month. It only had one bid, and that was from the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation. It, it didn't, the transaction did not go through, and the city still currently owns the building. The public schools also had Braceletally, Leonard, and Bussy, and seventy acres of vacant land and the, on the market, and there's been no takers. And the Lathrop School is privately owned and has been for sale for the past six years. There has been discussion with the Southfield Nonprofit about an adaptive reuse of John Grace. It's a historic building, built in nineteen-twenty-one. There were additions that were added on in nineteen-twenty-six and nineteen-forty-two, before it became part of the Southfield Public Schools in nineteen-forty-seven. After that, there were four more additions to the building. The nonprofit housing corporation did a market study on the need for affordable housing for seniors, and that market study did prove that there is a need in the city. The nonprofit retained PM Environmental to do an evaluation, and findings of asbestos and lead in the building, and even the water is no longer just safe to drink in this, in John Grace. There's also, the Southfield Nonprofit retained Quinn Evans Architectural Firm to create a preliminary drawing for the adaptive reuse as affordable housing. Here are some of the renderings. Again, the city still owns the property, but this is something that the nonprofit housing board is looking towards for the future, to create twenty-three one- and two-bedroom apartments. We, they would make, add an additional two wings with forty-nine one-bedroom units, and as well have an acre of green space and a play structure. Here's a floor plan of what that proposed, proposal would be, should they, they find the need to move forward. Again, another, this would be the second floor. And this is what the, the outside would look for from Indian, from Indian Street. The cost of renovation and new addition is estimated at twenty-point-one million dollars. One of the reasons that the Southfield Nonprofit did not go forward with this is, they were trying to get highly sought-after MISHDA credits, and unfortunately, they did not get that opportunity, and so they've moved on to other projects. But they haven't given up hope yet. McKinley School, it was built by developer Lee Baker in nineteen, in the nineteen-twenty's. It was built as Southfield Township District Number Seven, replacing a one-bedroom wooden school, and it opened in nineteen-twenty-seven. Southfield Public Schools added a ten-classroom addition with a kitchen and a gym in nineteen-fifty-six. The nonprofit housing corporation purchased this building from its private owner and is currently working with the architectural firm of SDG and Associates of Detroit for adapting the building for market-rate housing. Again, market-rate housing. And the nonprofit, as, we've also done environmental studies on the building, and asbestos and lead will have to be removed, which is why we're having the public hearing tonight to lead will have to be removed, which is why we're having the public hearing tonight to discuss the brownfield, to help with the costs of the environmental work. This is just a picture of the groundbreaking in nineteen fifty-six of the addition. One thing that the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Board is looking at and doing is a similar school conversion, and these pictures are from Washington Elementary School, which turned into a condo project, which is in Holland, Michigan. These are some of the renderings, or actual pictures of that building. This is what, again, this is Washington School Conversion in Holland. This is typical bedroom, as well as a typical living room. In McKinley School, the building, we would retain its historical character and elements while providing modern housing units. These are some of the architectural or historical features, water fountain, fireplace, exterior. This is the current classroom, as well as common area with that fireplace that you just saw earlier. And this is what we are proposing. If you look, you can still see that fireplace in the background. This would be the proposed common room. This is the building elevation of what, again, is being proposed, looking from the south. Here's a more, a wider shot. You have the school building, as well as some additional townhomes that were being This is a overview of the current property with a full plan. All the way on the left, that big building is currently the McKinley School, and then on the right side, the three rows, those are proposed townhomes. This is what, again, these are all proposed, but this is what the kitchen would look like, modern kitchen, stainless steel appliances, as well as a comfortable, open living space. This is a proposed floor plan. You have a ground floor, you have a garage, as well as the kitchen, living area, and then upper floors would have the bedrooms, bathroom, as well as anything else you would need in a townhome. So, again, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation is looking to partner with the city for rezoning currently the McKinley property and potentially John Grace, and obtain brownfield tax credits. The nonprofit has purchased the McKinley School outright, and is currently working on financing for this project. As I mentioned earlier, there was an offer to purchase John Grace, but we did not get the MISHDA credits, and they have tabled that discussion currently.
At this time, I'd like to ask Ryan from PM Environmental to come up and introduce himself, and I'm going to pull up his short presentation, where he'll talk about the
And I'd like to reiterate that the public hearing tonight is strictly for the brownfield environmental plan, and is not a site plan, it is not the proposed building. We were just giving everyone a high-level overview of what we plan to do, potentially.
Hi, my name is Ryan Aguchi. I work for PM Environmental at forty-eighty West Eleven Mile Road in Berkeley. Can't hear you? Sorry about that. Okay, so I'm kind of overlapped a little bit with the councilman's presentation, but it's a, was acquired by SF Community Renewal Foundation, and they're currently a developer that was built in nineteen thirty-six. It is designated as functioning obsolete, which makes it qualify for the Brownfield Act in Michigan. It's functionally obsolete because it lacks modern electrical and plumbing and mechanical systems, the asbestos and lead.
I'm sorry, not to cut you off, we're still having a problem hearing you. I don't know if it's a microphone or not.
Do I get into it a little bit more?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. It's functionally obsolete, which makes it qualify under the Brownfield Act of Michigan. So, it lacks modern electrical and plumbing and mechanical systems, it would often be upgraded. The asbestos and lead was mentioned, curtain building codes have to be addressed, as well as ADA compliance. It also has some technology needs that need to be upgraded and addressed as well, air conditioning being the biggest one, as well as internet capability and other Wi-Fi uses and things like that nature. There is a significant mold present in the modular building, that was due to lack of maintenance and heating for the last four or five years. The historical architecture will be preserved for the main building of the McKinley School, which is kind of nice. The renovation of that school kind of goes into with nine one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and three better units, as well as the eighteen carriage houses that will kind of complement the architectural theme of the school. The demolition of the modular building is proposed. There's no use for it, and it's also quite dilapidated. Construction of the four clusters of the two-story townhomes for additional twenty-eight units, which was in your presentation, councilman. Total investment is approximately sixteen-point-five million dollars. We estimate that it's going to create approximately forty temporary jobs and five permanent jobs, and be able to accommodate eighty-five new Southfield residents. The brownfield program kind of works within economic development, so this project has an opportunity to catalyze additional developments along the Ten Mile Road, as new residents come in and look for additional retail services and coffee shops and those kinds of things. So, there could be opportunity for spin-off developments from this project. There are total eligible costs under the brownfield program is about three-point-one-nine million dollars, which includes a fifteen percent contingency, which is typical for brownfield plans. The eligible activities that would be funded under this, under the brownfield plan, would be demolition, the lead and asbestos abatement, some of the infrastructure improvements, site preparation, as well as the brownfield plan preparation itself. It does not have a taxable value right now. The estimated taxable value, once the completion of the project has happened, is about two-point-five million dollars, and the duration of the plan would be about twenty-two years. And that's it like that.
Councilman, did you have additional comments?
I just wanted to add, before the public hearing, additional comments. I know the council members have received some emails regarding this property, and I just wanted to ease some concerns by answering some of those questions, if I may.
Go right in.
Again, this public hearing is strictly for brownfield, a site plan meeting. The proposed development will follow the proper planning department procedures for any development, and I will say that there is currently a planning department or planning commission public hearing for the proposed development scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, here in this chamber.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, twenty-eighth. I'm sorry, our meeting's on the twenty-sixth, but the planning commission is meeting on this plan on the twenty-eighth. There were, some of the questions, they were long, I will paraphrase, there was some, there was a question about managing a conflict because myself, Mr. Zorn, the mayor, do sit on the nonprofit housing corporation board. As I explained, that was put in place to avoid issues with the city, and to have more transparency to the city council. And the reason we are going ahead with this is, we are working to repurpose a vacant and blighted building. We are going to be removing environmental hazards, as well as bringing new residents to this area. And again, this is going to be a market-rate housing project. This is not going to be Section Eight or low-income housing. How will the council ensure that there is utmost transparency for the neighborhood? Again, this will be going through the same process that any developer will have to go through. It's already been submitted to the planning department. The planning commission will be having their meeting on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, with final approval of the site plan by the city council. How will the council ensure construction plans are approved? There is a possibility that the construction will be done in phases. They may start with just this actual school building, while removing all the trailers and everything else, and then once more financing has been secured, additional townhomes may be built. Again, this is a very fluid process, but we have a long-term outlook for the project. What data does the Southfield Nonprofit have to support the need for so many additional residential units? The city has multiple planning documents within its master plan, as well as several housing studies, including the Gibbs Report. Spring Haven and our apartments and Southfield and Twelve Mile also show support for this type of development. Those are, have been, they were sold out before they were constructed, and are averaging, those are apartments on Twelve Mile and Southfield, averaging rents of over fifteen-hundred dollars a month, as well as Spring Haven is also a very high-cost area. So, we do have those to support. There's also been a segment of the population that is looking for new construction, as our housing stock is anywhere from fifty to sixty years old, and many people want new construction, and this will give them that opportunity for new construction. What alternative plan for construction units? What will be the alternative plan for constructed units that do not sell? That's a question every developer has. We don't plan to have that problem, but we will have an answer if that should happen, which, again, we are not planning on that happening. How will the nonprofit ensure that the Washington Heights residents' voices are heard through the development process? Again, the planning commission is having a public hearing on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, and the process will follow as any developer or development would have to go through. How will the council ensure that the nonprofit and its developers give diligence to addressing the concerns of the Washington Heights constituents? Again, we follow the planning process, as well as meetings like this, for the residents to come during the communications portion, if it's not a public hearing on the specific development, to come and voice their opinions, and all council members are also available by phone and email. So, again, this will go through the normal process. Once the plan is, it's been submitted, it will go through the proper planning process, like every other development in the city. Tonight, we are only seeking the brownfield plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. With all that said, we'd like to now open up the public hearing. If there's any residents here, or individuals here, that would like to speak to this item on, just on the brownfield redevelopment plan, please come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Pamela Jarrop, PO Box one-fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven-dash-zero-one-five-five. My telephone number is two-four-eight-three-four-six-zero-four-three-nine. I just have a couple of questions, and if someone wants to take those questions down, I think it's very important that the residents get answers to these questions. Number one, what's the purpose of partnering with the city, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, or is it one and the same? Number two, we seem to not have a standard when it comes to new builds in the city of Southfield, or even requiring the pre-existing buildings that are going to be renovated to become LEED-certified. We use the term "we're going to be green" very loosely. Green just means to put in LED lights, and that's not really something that we need to just ignore. You know, you guys gave Sarah Chevrolet a hard and hell of a time to get that dealership. You asked a lot of questions about the wind turbines, and was the water going to be recycled, and all of these things, and Sarah Chevrolet stepped up to the plate and became a state-of-the-art business here in Southfield, totally green. So, is this going to be a LEED-certified development? If so, which level is it going to be? To be just certified, you only need forty to forty-nine points. To be silver-certified, you need fifty to fifty-nine points. To be gold-certified, you need sixty to seventy-nine, and to be platinum, you need eighty. So, are we going to just put in LED lights, maybe wrap the pipes, and call it a green building, or are you going to go all the way up and do it right, and do what we hope the trend is for new development and renovation, and that is to become LEED-certified? You answered one of the questions, whether or not it was going to be public housing, like, you know, MISHDA, Section Eight, so you did answer that question. And the other question is, we had the John Grace Center there for many years. That building was highly contaminated with asbestos and a lot of other environmental things, and the water was horrible. We had employees that worked over there that got extremely sick, and we don't know if we can blame it on John Grace, but I hope that you do a real good cleanup. And what's the community benefit? What are you going to give the residents for this brownfield?
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. If there are any other individuals here that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, greetings.
Hold on one second, we need to turn the clock back. All right, there we go.
Hi, greetings. My name is Onika Newsen. I live at eighteen-five-seven-zero Capital, in the Washington Heights area. My family has lived there for over thirty-five years now. My question is, well, one of the great amenities in living in the Washington Heights area is that, is the secluded nature. So, you guys are talking about building a dwelling of eighty-eight residents. Is there any way to reduce that number? That's my question. And then, what is the number of total apartments or dwellings, including the apartments along with the townhomes, that you're going to have in that area? And then, what about the traffic that's going to be coming in and out now with eighty-eight new residents? We don't have a lot of traffic going in and out of that neighborhood. It's very quiet for the most part. And then, there was another question. You said the duration of twenty-two years, what does that mean exactly? And then, are we going to have another option to maybe propose something else that could go in that space? Like I said, my family has been there for over thirty-five years, and that was not an active school, I think, until the charter school came in, because as a child that went to Southfield Public Schools, and I live kitty-corner to that McKinley Building, we didn't go to that school, we went to Atler. So, it was not even active for Southfield students when we moved there in the fall of eighty-three. So, those are just some questions I would like answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this public hearing is still open. Any other individuals like to speak, please come forward.
Gray Keeler, Southfield resident. I would like to say no if the nonprofit organization is in it, because one of the things they said was McDonald Towers. I had a best friend that was in McDonald Towers. He went to the hospital. He was in a wheelchair. When he came back, they had redone his apartment building, and made it so a person that had ADA problems could not go in there and cook in his own kitchen again. Once again, he could not use any of his utensils. His apartment was totally destroyed, so he had to spend the next three months either in a nursing home or a hospital, because it had been redone. So, my biggest problem with, what I see with this nonprofit organization, and even some of the houses, you're not bringing them up. of the houses, you're not bringing them up to code, up to standard, to where they should be. And I see, even in all the other things we do, as far as ADA compliance goes, you're not doing it at all. And if you want to look at a platinum building, I've been in a platinum building. That was a LEED-platinum building. I could look straight out the door, and I could see straight out of it. So, it was not fire-code qualified, but it was platinum. All platinum means is, basically, did you buy the parts? Was it put in right? That's the other thing you've got to ask. Was it put in right? Within the city, you do not look at how buildings are put together, how they are performed. There's another part that is integrated now with LEED, which is called BPI. They don't meet those standards. They can't test the half the stuff that they do and everything else, so when you say it's LEED to me, piece of junk unless it's been built right by the right person. And it's a fire trial. LEED, I've walked in, I have looked at all types of things that were failing, as far as the heat, heating ventilation and everything else being wrong in those buildings. So, I would think very highly about it. You do not have cold people that can check and check right and check properly, and you do not have a LEED person on board.
All right, the public hearing is still open. Any other individuals here that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Douglas Moore. I live at two four five three five Lee Baker Drive. My question is this. I just got a notice about they having, I guess they testing out the sewer system, putting smoke in it or whatever. I got that on my mailbox. But what I didn't get was this notice about trying to build some housing in my subdivision. What I don't understand, this gentleman here, the way he was talking, if we approve this today, this project is just, it's gone. Today is the day that y'all need to stop. Don't approve this. Have you put out some bids for some single-family housing? You put out any bids, or it's just a done deal because he's on the city council and here's the mayor, and he says it's transparency? How's that transparency? Tell me, that he's the proven person, and so is he's the proven, how's that transparency? That's not transparency, that's working together. Now, I might have been born yesterday, but I'm no fool. In my neighborhood, before they started working on Northwestern Highway, there was no traffic. I called his office, because they were flying down my street fifty miles an hour. You know what they told me? Oh, well, you know, it's, it's just a residence. We can't stop the cars from coming down your street. I said, but you can put up a sign that says, "No through traffic." "Oh, no, we can't do that." I said, yes, you can, because you did it on Ten Mile when he was doing construction. No through traffic. So, for this gentleman to keep using the word, "Oh, this is done, it's done, it's done," that's, that's like telling us in the community, we don't have a voice. Because if you put out a notice to everybody in our community, and you didn't have this man right here, go out on his time, to go around to tell us what y'all getting ready to do in our neighborhood, wouldn't nobody be up here, it'd be a done deal, like you keep saying, a done deal. It's, it's a done deal. Oh, we're not approving the site plan and all that, we're just doing the Brownfield. For this gentleman to come in and take this building and put in some, you know, rehab it, that's a brown, just to rehab it. No, we're not going to tear it down. We're just going to rehab it, but we're going to put up some, some townhouses over here. We don't know what the rent is, but it's market rate. Who determines the rent? Who's behind, who's going to collect the rent? Who is that? Is it you? Is it the mayor? Who is it? I don't know. Have, before you pass this proposal today, put out notices to everybody in the community. You don't have this man working for you.
And again, that's why we have the public hearing, so we can speak to some of those issues, so we don't understand. Well, the meetings, we're here every Monday. The public hearing is still open. If there's anyone else that would like to speak, please come forward.
Stacy Jackson, two one six eight five Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three three. By now, I am no stranger to city council coming to the lectern, and I do want to applaud the residents that are behind me, coming to stand up for their community. I was a little nervous today, because my stronger half is at a national convention for a radio show, but boy, oh, boy, we still have strong Southfield residents here in the House. I wasn't planning to speak today, not on this issue, but the sheer fact that we have residents here who are completely unaware of these plans is a problem. If you can force someone to submit something for every resident within three hundred feet to rezone something, then every resident within three hundred feet of these schools should already be aware of this, so that they can have a voice in what's happening. Not less than two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, another community, Lockmore, was here, standing here to fight for the right to have houses built compatible to what's already there. So, if you can approve that, what makes that community that much more better, or more valuable than the residents behind me, to deserve housing that's already there, compatible to that existing? Who says bringing apartments here is going to make this better? It's not. The problem that I have with Southfield is that oftentimes, you make decisions before even asking those that it actually affects. We vote for you, and we elect you in to be our voices, not big business. And that tends to be the problem that's not only affecting us nationally, but it seems to be a cancer locally. When are we going to make a positive change, that while you all are the most powerful people in the city, that the ones you're facing are the most important? I urge you, please stop making these types of decisions without consulting the people you work for. They may even want walking trails there, turn them into flatland with giant rocks. We've already put a stonehenge at Carpenter Lake. They may want rocks around this. We might even get more development companies that want to come in, if it's flatland. We need to start putting people first. Thank you.
All right, the public hearing is still open. Please try to hold down applause and stuff. We understand your passion about this issue, but we want to make sure we get through this meeting in a proper way, so our next individual, please, we move forward.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I wasn't coming to speak on this matter, but my name is Denise Stargio. I live on Winchester. I've been a resident of Southfield over twenty-plus years. The only question I have about this project is, how is it not conflict of interest? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other individuals here? The public hearing is still open. Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is John Oden. I live at one eight six one one Capital Drive. I'm, I just want to tell you a little story about me. When I was eighteen, my father had apartments, and there was a drug house that took over the apartments. There was a shooting gallery next door to it, and I was a hundred and forty-seven pounds. And my love for my father apartments, I went up there with a two-by-four by myself, and there were guys in the drug house, and they had guns on the table, and I got them away from that apartment. They left. They say, "Little Oden, you got guts," and I got them out of there. Next door was a shooting gallery, had forty guys in there, and they left too. They all left when we got our apartment back. My house, I put a lot into it. You probably see me cutting and trimming. I don't allow people to, landscaping people to come in and do that. I do it myself. I'm sixty, almost sixty-five years old, and I do it by myself. And I have a lot of passion when it comes to my home, and that subdivision is beautiful. It's wonderful, hardly any crime, anything. I never, there's never packages taken from my house. It's almost like a gated community. And when you put an apartment complex in a subdivision like that, you change the whole environment. It just, and we, I've been there twenty years, and you guys give me award every year for my home. You all, you all give us that award every year. We put a lot into it. I put a lot of money in my home, and we just want our subdivision to stay like it is. You know, I know it's a problem, having an empty school there, but we just want our subdivision to stay. Apartment complex, this is an experiment. This is an experiment, and we just want our, our homes to say, to say it is, to the way it is. I'm a little nervous from coming up here, because when I came in this room, I felt the power in the room. And I just, I'm like David. There's a lot of Jewish people here. I just want our subdivision to be safe, and I thank you for having me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other individuals that would like to come forward?
Hello, my name is Kiana Linton. I live at one eight seven two five Capital Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh seven five. I'm here to talk about the McKinley School. I did a few, some research, and on November twenty-ninth of twenty-seventeen, an article was published titled "Homeowners Blast Southfield Over Foreclosures: City Says They Didn't Pay Taxes." Now, this information is from Channel Seven, WXYZ Detroit. Between twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen, the mayor and the city of Southfield have bought all of the foreclosed homes from the city. During this time, many homeowners believed that they were being targeted by the city's greed. Now, the city was buying, the article said the city was purchasing the homes first, and then transferring the titles over to the nonprofit. This is the same nonprofit that is redoing the McKinley School. I'm just wondering that during the foreclosures, if the people were worried about the city's greed, should I be worried about the city's greed as well with this development? Now, I understand that you have a councilman on there, and you have a mayor on there. However, I think that it's very inappropriate. I think it is a conflict of interest, and if somebody else was from the outside was looking in, would think that it was very corrupt. Now, you also say that it's a nonprofit. However, nonprofits can make profit. So, who is getting paid from this nonprofit? Is the councilman and the mayor just going to walk away from this building after it's been done and not have anything in their pocket, no profit whatsoever? It's going to cost sixteen million dollars to do it, so are you going to pay the investors from it? Why can't you just turn this property into a park, into four single-family homes? This is a small, quiet, and respectable community that is going to be degraded when you turn these apartment buildings here. Think about your community. Think about your residents. You were elected because we believed in you, because we believed that you would give us a voice, that you would take us into consideration. I feel like my community and myself have been silenced. It is wrong, it is disrespectful, and I am disappointed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Betty Smith, and I live at one eight six one one Capital Drive, in the Washington Heights subdivision. My family has lived in Washington Heights for the last twenty years, and we consider ourselves blessed to have found what we consider a hidden gem in our community. The only problem we ever experienced was when our neighbors, when our neighbor rented out her home. With that being said, I'm very passionate and opposed to the mayor's plan to rezone the McKinley School to build forty-six living units on only four acres of land. When the mayor told us he was going to build forty-six units at the McKinley site, I asked him if he would consider building single-family homes that are consistent with our existing neighborhood, and he said no, because his volunteer organization invested eight hundred thousand dollars to purchase the functionally obsolete property, and he couldn't make any money. He also said he needed twenty million dollars in investors. Well, if you do the math, twenty million divided by forty-six units equals four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per unit. Since we allow, since we all know this area will not support four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar condos, that leaves investors no other option but to rent the units. That many units will increase the stench from the dumpsters, increase traffic, lower our property value, bring excessive parking to our streets, increase chances of break-ins to our cars and homes, increase amount of accidents, et cetera. The list can go on and on. My family is not opposed to redeveloping the land. We're opposed to the number of units that's been being built on the land. Once zoning changes and these units are up, it'll be too late, and our safe haven will be ruined. We feel safe and secure. Our community is absolutely beautiful and very peaceful. We pay our taxes, invest in our property, and have planned to live in our home for many more years. Rumor has it that the mayor has purchased a beautiful home in a gated community in another state. So, that tells me that after the mayor retires, he wants to be as far away from Southfield as possible. I beg you, please don't allow him to destroy hundreds of lives, so that we can, so that he can make millions, leaving behind a truly devastated community. It is my request that we postpone the Brownsville proposal voting tonight, so that we, as citizens of Washington Heights, have a chance to discuss and understand, and further our opinions, and to voice our opinions, and how our future will look while living in the Washington Heights subdivision.
Good evening. My name is Carlita Poitras. I live on one eight six zero nine George Washington Drive, just a few houses down from the school that we're speaking about this evening. I'm a newbie to the neighborhood, in that I've purchased a home in that community approximately five years ago, and when I did, I thought I had hit the jackpot. It was the perfect neighborhood for me, including all of my wonderful neighbors that have showed up, the beautiful, unique architecture to all of the different homes, the different landscaping that I noticed driving through the neighborhood. I quickly purchased a bike, so that I can ride my bike through the neighborhood, because it was a quiet neighborhood. There was low traffic. Last summer, you guys, when they did the construction to the service drive, it brought so much traffic through our subdivision. I have a dog now. I couldn't even walk my dog on that side of the subdivision, because there was so much traffic. I couldn't ride my bike, because there was so much traffic. As of now, I feel very safe in my community, in my subdivision. I don't feel like I have to run into the house, or I don't feel threatened when I'm pulling up at night. My neighbors, we support each other, and we look out for each other. And I grew up in the city of Detroit on a street where a bus line came down my street. That's how busy the, the street was. I'm not interested in a busy street anymore. I also lived in an apartment for eight years before I purchased my home, so I'm not interested in apartment activity any longer, and this is why I moved into this subdivision, because of that. If these apartments come here, especially with the volumes that you speak of, it will be a big bummer. I feel like I've made a good investment as of now, and I just don't want to be disappointed in, in the community that I'm living in.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Ledford. I live at one eight seven five six Capital Drive. I'm, of course, opposed to this situation, and I had a two-page type letter, but I'm not going to read all of it. I just want some questions I know you can't answer. Who owns the property? One presentation said the nonprofit. This individual said the SF Community Corporation, that was just formed in April two thousand eighteen. There is only one member, or one person, part of this nonprofit, which is legal. They don't have to have this one person, Mr. Corn, I believe, no, Mr. Simon, he, whatever. He doesn't have to have a board of directors. He, whatever. He doesn't have to have a board of directors. He doesn't have to answer to anything. The only thing is, he can't take money. He can't make money off of his nonprofit. But other individuals can. Because it says so right in the Article Seven of their, of his, um, articles of incorporation. I wanna know who this FS is and who owns the property, the San McKinley. It's only one person, or is it the nonprofit? And I invite each council member to go past the McKinley High School, the site, I mean, school, the site. I have seen anywhere from the number of forty, and then in the number of one of your grants papers that you received for the brownstone, about sixty. And I've seen in the legal news, I think they have forty-something or fifty-something. It's all over the map. I want this tabled. The main thing is that if this Brownfield proposal goes through, I see on that plan that you have listed what you plan to do with the building. So you may be locked into saying, well, we plan to get it cleaned up. We wanna get it cleaned up, and we plan to build X number of units on that property. Go buy our property, go buy McKinley's site with four acres and see if it can support forty-five to sixty units. That's all I'm asking. Go buy and see if you would want a complex in the middle of your subdivision. There aren't any other bill, uh, subdivisions around here that have that type of structure or that type of density within it. But we have to take it. And, well, no, we don't have to take it. No, I'm, I'm gonna change that. We don't have to take it, and I don't think that we should. It needs to be stopped. This SF relationship and this nonprofit relationship needs to be invested. Why is there just one person?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular matter? Please come to the lectern. Ken, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Devon Owens. I live at one eight seven two five Capital Drive in Southfield. And I am asking the council to, um, table this and put this on hold until some more information can be gathered. We were told on May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, at our, um, community meeting that this was going to happen. But we were never asked anything as to what it is that we would like to have in our community. It's not appropriate to put a little city inside of our community where we have single-family homes. We live there, we pay taxes there. We should be asked what we would like to have in our community. We were never asked that. We were just told that. Um, my question then, and it's still my question now, is this a conflict of interest? Now, I did some research, and I know that the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, um, Mayor Cyver is the president as well as a director. I know that Councilmember, um, Madame Baum, he is the, let me get my notes. He is the secretary and he's also a director. Now, for the Southfield Community Renewal Corporation, which is the one that's proposing the Brownfield, um, there is a gentleman on there. His name is Mitchell Simon. And he is also the treasurer of the Southfield Nonprofit Corporation, which the mayor has. So there's like a lot of commingling here. But I'm sure if there is gonna be a project, there could be some individuals that live in Southfield that are contractors that might wanna get involved with this. And I don't have a problem with the school being something done to it because it needs to be done. But we don't need another city inside of our residential community. We don't need that. So I'm asking that anybody that is directly involved on the board for either one of these is recused from voting. Cause that's just not fair. It's just not right. Um, people ask about a conflict of interest, and clearly to me it is, and that's been my question all along. We cannot take our power and our authority and kinda swindle through to get what it is that we want. We live here, we pay taxes here. We don't even have sidewalks. So if you're walking your dog or your kids are riding their bike, you bring another subdivision in here, then what are you gonna do? You just might as well get on the grass because you're gonna get ran over. So I'm just praying that you will table this until some more information can be obtained, until we as citizens that live here and pay taxes here and reside here, that we have a say in what is gonna go on in our subdivision. And I know there might be people that don't wanna talk or, you know, don't really know what to say, or everything's been said. But can we just get a show of hands as to who is opposed to this? Stand up if you're opposed. Stand up, please, if you're opposed.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Please come to the lectern. We have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Shelley, do you wanna start off?
I, um, well, regarding the Brownfield, so the Brownfield is a tool that's put in place to enable any redevelopment of the property, um, to be reimbursed under those eligible items. So there was a list of eligible items that were determined that needed to be cleaned up at the site. So this Brownfield puts in place a tool so that whoever the future developer is, is able to recapture the taxes that are generated from the site to be reimbursed back to the developer. So it's my understanding that this project was developed by the Southfield Nonprofit and a separate entity, the SF Community, um, Renewal, uh, Corporation was put in place. And they are looking for a developer to build out the project. They have hired a developer, uh, an architect who's here today who could share information about any green initiatives that will go on in the redevelopment, if that's, um, if you'd like to hear about that. But the act of redeveloping an older, underutilized property is a green initiative in and of itself. So that we'll be repurposing the property and bringing it back to life. And I understand that there's a lot of issues with the neighborhood if, if this is what they choose or not choose to have in their community. But it is a green initiative to bring this property back to, um, you know, a taxable entity, which is the desire of this project. So again, if there's no taxes generated from the project, there will no be not, there will not be any dollars to capture, to reimburse the developer when that person's selected. So this is just to put the base in place so that if any, um, activities, like to clean up the site, you know, to remove the module, site, the module properties that are there and to, to put that property in a nicer condition right now, um, this, this will enable whoever is spending those dollars to recapture those dollars in the future. So again, it's, it's just a speculative project at this point. And when a developer is selected to move this project forward, then, you know, all the other discussion is, is relevant. But in order to do any cleanup at the site, to be reimbursed, the Brownfield would, that's the purpose of putting that in place right now. And again, it was mentioned the terms of this project. It cited that whoever the developer is at the projected costs that are outlined in the plan, um, it will take twenty-two years to reimburse whoever the developer is for their investment. The city would also regain a portion of dollars, uh, an additional five years. The city's able to capture taxes from all the other taxing entities. So we'll be able to recoup those dollars, which we can use for future redevelopment or removing of other, um, deteriorated properties or contaminated properties in the community. We'll also be reimbursed for administrative fee back to the city.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, so I just wanna speak. My name is Tanya Morris, and I live at one eight five eight one Capital. My home is, is three doors down from the McKinley School. And, um, just a couple of things. Um, there was a question about who owned the school, and it was presented, uh, that the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation owns it, but it's now acquired by the Southfield Renewal Foundation. Is that correct?
SF Renewal Corporation.
SF Renewal Corporation. Okay, so they are the owners?
Yes.
But that corporation is wholly owned by the Southfield Nonprofit.
So that is, okay, so that's the linkage between the two. Okay, and, and so the, that's a LLC in place to do market development? Market rate development?
Yes.
Okay. Has the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation received MISTDA tax credits yet for this development?
They're, they're not tax credits. This is tax increment financing. So as the future taxes are paid, in similar fashion, that was done for the apartments at, uh, Twelve Mile and Southfield, or the old landfill across from Home Depot, Depot on, uh, Twelve Mile. Um, it's the same type of tax, it's tax increment financing. We tend to use those interchangeable, but they are very different. It's not a tax credit that has to be granted through MISTDA. And, and when we talk about housing tax credits, those are usually for affordable housing.
So this financing structure is different from what would've been at John Grace?
It, it is very different than, um, the financing at McDowell Towers or River Park Place. Um, in fact, the term i- i- in my write-up was residential units. It's not been determined. Our preference is that these will be condominiums. The nonprofit, uh, housing corporations committed to, you know, you know, what we're doing with SNRI, cleaning up and rehabilitating these homes, bringing them back to market. Same time, we wanna see a resurgence in our condominium, which is a, uh, market, which is an owner-occupied product typically. And that market still hasn't come back. So that's one of the objectives that we're looking for there. We prefer condominium ownership, single-fee ownership, where each unit is owned by that individual. It, however, that hasn't been finalized. I use that term residential units.
Okay, has an investor been identified?
We, we are still seeking an investor. And if I may say one other thing, I said this to, uh, at our council president's meeting. This Brownfield plan is speculative. Regardless of whether the building stays or goes, these environmental issues have to be dealt with. So as a speculative Brownfield plan, if the, if, at the end of the day, a site plan is, is not approved and the site is torn down, by putting this tool in place, we can begin that process to deal with those module units, the storm, the standing water on the site, as well as get the asbestos and lead out of that building. That has to be dealt with prior to any demolition.
I just wonder, um, you know, since the building is functionally obsolete, I just wonder why so much was paid for. It, it, the purchase price was eight hundred thousand dollars. And so I'm wondering if maybe less was paid, then maybe we could've looked at a different type of development, uh, in that area. Why, why would almost a million dollars paid for a functionally obsolete building?
That's how that building appraised. John Grace has an appraisal of six hundred thousand. And, and it's a smaller building. So that's typical of where these buildings are right now in the marketplace.
Okay. Um, so I've lived in, uh, Washington Heights for almost twenty years. And, um, you know, it is a safe and, uh, neighbor-friendly, you know, respectable, uh, quiet, calm community. And, um, you know, although many of us here are not opposed to, um, the repurposing of, of the school, um, we just wanted to have our voices heard, and we wanted to be more involved in the process. Um, I, I think, uh, I can truly say that I, I do support, uh, the residents in my neighborhood, just for me. I mean, it's three doors down. So I, I do want to see if there's a, a, a way that we can, um,
Can we please hold your applause down?
You know, just be heard. Maybe we can come back to the table, um, and, um, allow everyone to get an opportunity to, to share their thoughts, um, and what they'd like to see. Again, we were presented with this plan in May at our, um, Washington Heights Neighborhood Association meeting. And I'm the best, vice president of that, that association. So, uh, we just wanna protect the integrity of our neighborhood and make sure that it is consistent with and compatible to, um, uh, the other homes, uh, in the community. So I would be in support, and I humbly request that the council would, uh, delay the vote on this tonight.
Okay. Can Dawn go? Did you wanna ask, uh, Mr. Precasti? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Precasti.
Are you gonna say something, or?
No.
No, I want the floor. Okay. I, I just really, uh, sitting here, this is the first time I seen this presentation. Sitting here as a councilperson. And we've talked about it previously, never seen it. There has been no meeting on it with the residents? There was a meeting, I understand, but I was not invited as a councilperson? Or I guess the only two individuals were there? I mean, I don't particularly like that because I've gone through closing of schools, the Angling Road, Southfield Ten, Shane Holes, a lot of them that are used by different people or they have been closed down, sold for other purposes. But I don't like sitting here and not knowing what goes on. And I'm really getting ticked off about it. I said we have no communications. Have maybe two, three meetings a month, and there's plenty of time in that month to sit down and talk about these issues and how we're gonna deal with them. All of a sudden, it lands on my desk, and I really don't like that. I was raised to have two meetings a week and one Saturday a month, you know? And we're not getting on top of things as a councilperson. And I don't wanna go on with this kinda thing unless I know what the, what the options are. What the people think. I, the first time I've heard people that don't like it. And I wouldn't like it if it was Leonard's School. I'd probably come off the wall. All right? So, so I just, I just wanna be kept up to snuff. When, when things are done in the city, who's responsible for it? Who's doing it? When it comes to council, the action we take, what is it for? So it's for a Brownfield. What does that mean? Does that set anything else in motion? Does that allow this to go through or not? And I, so it's nonprofit. I don't follow it. I don't, I know we have a member of council on it, the mayor's on it. We don't get the minutes of the meetings. We don't, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I, I don't like the process. We had, what, twenty-five houses bought? Why would leave four hundred twenty-five houses vacant? And nobody's dealing with the four hundred. Why should I worry about twenty-five? I gotta find out why we have a hundred and seventy-five houses closed and how we're gonna deal with it. You know? Oh, I am not for this.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you. I have had an opportunity to visit the location as well as the homes that's on the surrounding streets. And I did notice that on one block, there was like five houses. So they have a very secluded and quiet neighborhood. Um, and I have listened to all of the residents, uh, every opportunity that they called, and I, I listened. Um, I had several questions, but I'm just gonna ask you two. On the write-up, we mentioned something about carriage houses. Through my investigation, I found out those are garages. Can that be, is that a true statement? Are those truly garages? Okay. And then, we are, we, I was, uh, told that this is the Brownfield Development Plan. But when we look at the title of the paperwork, it's saying, "And Development and Reimbursement Agreement for the SF Community." Can, is there any way you can separate that and leave it just the Brownfield? Because everybody that I talked to is not opposed to cleaning up the asbestos and the tile and all of that. But they want to have more conversation on the development piece. So we need two separate things.
The agreement typically is completely separate, and the agreement would be with the developer who's doing the work. So again, in order to set the foundation and enable the city or the nonprofit association to be able to recapture these dollars at some point, there has to be an agreement put in place. The agreement has not been prepared at this point. It's something that whoever the developer, so you're, so it is really separate. But the developer at that point will work with our city attorney and come to the final terms.
So then, and then, are those truly garages?
You know, I, like you, I was submitted a plan from the nonprofit. And so we have the architect here, or maybe perhaps someone from the nonprofit would like to talk about the, the project itself in more detail.
And then?
Do you like that?
I would also suggest that we put this on hold until we have some kind of community... I would also suggest that we put this on hold until we have some kind of community conversation. I know that they met and it was discussed at one meeting. But from hearing everything here today, obviously there needs to be more. And I know when I was on planning, we've done this several times, where we would go back and ask the developer to speak to the residents before we took an action on something. So I would respectfully ask that we would do that in this case.
Mr. Braywell?
I just wanted to reinforce it again. I believe that the intent was that this is a speculative project, that there really is, it's just a framework for what the project could be. And again, if the nonprofit or some agency were to go in and start removing the modular units, if this is not in place, there cannot be any cleanup work started on the property. And so if the neighborhood wanted some activity to clean up the site right now, that's not possible. So that's all I'm saying.
Right, but is this brownfield time-sensitive then? Are you saying it's time-sensitive?
Well, I'm saying if there was some sort of desire from the community and the neighborhood to have cleanup work started, then it is time-sensitive. Because in order for those, for whoever is doing the work to be able to recoup taxes in the future, that's not, those items would not be able to be refunded. And I do know, you know, we've had several projects, and I understand that the community is not in favor of this as it's laid out. We've had a lot of different projects come forward. We do have a lot of vacant schools. I know our city planner and the city has been trying to market these properties. The marketplace and the city are at two different places. And the desire to have single-family homes built in the community, there really is, there's not a connection right now. And the brownfield plan helps to bridge that connection, to level the playing field and to entice new development into the city. There's a big gap between the new construction and what people are getting for homes and the amount of work that has to be done to this site in order to get it ready. And so this brownfield helps, you know, get us over that hump and to bring in a developer. So again, I understand it's going through the planning commission, there's a lot of steps moving forward. But this was really, is a measure to say, look, the community is going to embrace some sort of development at the site. And in the future, these dollars could be recouped to help pay to clean up this property in whatever fashion the city council chooses to move forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Braywell?
Yeah. I'm partial to what Mr. Focassi said. And from a project management standpoint, and I've dealt with project management all my life, there seem to be, have been a lapse in communication here. And I would like to see this thing table every, methodically inform council, lay out everything that needs to be done. I'm a strong proponent of brownfield. I know exactly what it is. It's a positive for anyone who want to do some things. But I think there's been some miscommunication and there hasn't been a proper rollout of this to the individuals that need to vote on it. So whatever process, we stop this and start it up again and make sure that everything is laid out appropriately.
All right. So councilors, excuse me, please, can we, please, thank you. I just want to hear from my colleagues here. Do we have a consensus at the table to a later date?
Yes.
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 Okay. Mr. Manalbaum?
I agree. I just wanted to answer some additional questions to the best of my ability. And also tell everyone again, there is a public hearing set that we can work on this. But I will work with the mayor as well to set up a separate meeting with the neighborhood. And we can discuss the plan. And we can go through why this plan was chosen over single-family homes, over any other type of development. So please be patient, we will meet with the neighborhood separately. They will.
We understand you, sir. We understand you, sir.
We'll send out notices. There was a question about wording about partnering with the city. It's a term we use for all of our incentives, whether it's a tax abatement or a property, personal property exemption. We just call it partnering because the city is the body that needs to approve those things. So we're not partnering with the city, but we do need the city to approve, in this case would be a brownfield, so we can get rid of the trailers, get rid of the asbestos, the lead and the water and things like that. A comment was made about traffic, bringing this additional traffic. Charter schools or even private schools, as it was before it became vacant, actually has more increased traffic than our studies have shown. And there, again, there were other uses looked for, but we will discuss that with the neighborhood. There was a comment made that perhaps the mayor, myself, are profiting off of this nonprofit. We have, we do not accept, we do not, we have never taken any money. We have never been offered money. Again, my role on this board is a council representative. If the council president decides tomorrow that he would like to have someone else on the board, I would be stepping off and that person would be in my place. There is no, there's no profiting personally off of this development. We hear your concerns and I do think that we would postpone this vote. And we will work on working, getting together a meeting with the neighborhood and discuss this plan in its entirety.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manalbaum. So you will work with the mayor and...
Yeah, I will work with him as well.
And I'm sure Ms. Morse will as well.
I mean, just being of Washington Heights.
That's right, okay. Mr. Braywell?
Yeah. I do seem to understand the importance of this. I'm looking forward to readapt, readapting all our buildings that we have in the city of Southfield. So I would like to see timeframes laid out for council. This is, you know, this date, that day. So I want to see this thing get back on track and make sure it's going down the road so that we are re-adapting all these buildings. And this could be a lesson learned for everything else we got in the city that needs to be readapted. And so if I can, from somewhere, someone...
I'm sorry, please, can we please...
What?
No, don't, continue your comments.
Oh, if we can, get some type of timeline in the near future that's reasonable and not overstressing the departments, but it's reasonable, a reasonable timeline to get this back on track.
All right, thanks then. Mr. Mayor, then we'll move on to our next, oh, then Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, I would like to just explain a few things from where I'm coming from. As a 53-year resident of the city, I lived in an apartment when I first moved here and then I bought a house in Magnolia where I still reside. I've been on my neighborhood board continuously since 1974. I have a great passion for housing and neighborhoods. And as I've often said, when I moved here to teach at Thompson School in 1967, I taught in a new school. I was living in a brand-new apartment. The roads were new. And 53 years later, the times have changed. We were bursting at the seams. When I taught at Thompson, we had 1,000 kids there. Today, there might be 400. And our housing stock has aged. This, how I got involved in nonprofit housing board started about 12 years ago when residents of McDonald Tower and River Park Place came to council repeatedly and said, "We have no heat for a week. We have no hot water. The elevator is out again." I'm 83 years old and I live on the 10th floor. And nothing was being done. And this was not acceptable to me. It was not acceptable. There's something I often talk about, it's called the Southfield standard. And it really is based on, when I moved here, what the conditions are and how to keep this community strong. And so we were able to redo all of the apartments at River Park Place. And matter of fact, I became the council appointee to the nonprofit housing board, which are all Southfield residents and they are, no one is paid for that service. There are eight Southfield residents on the board. And when I joined the board, they were not, they were not meeting regularly. The consensus was sort of a build and abandon mentality. You build it and then you move on. There was nobody really interested in renovating these 508 units for affordable housing for our senior adult population. And this was wrong to me. And consequently, I began working to change the conditions that our seniors were living in. And we were very successful in renovating these apartments. We spent over 20 million on rehabbing all of these apartments. We spent $37,000 to $40,000 per unit. And everything is brand-new there. Due to our financing arrangement, the Southfield nonprofit, plus with an agreement with MISHDA, ended up with millions of dollars. And I turned to the nonprofit board and I said, you know, "We really need work in our neighborhoods. We need to help our single-family homes." And in Washington Heights, for instance, I think we're on the fourth house that's being rehabilitated in the neighborhood. These rehabilitations make these brand-new homes. There have been, or soon will be, 140 properties. A number of them are vacant lots that are involved in the neighborhood revitalization initiative. I also see a problem in the neighborhoods with vacant buildings. And so perhaps we've moved too fast. But I want to tell you, the intent is out of real concern for our neighborhoods. It is not something I am profiting on or Mr. Manalbaum. We serve, we put in hours on this and we do it as volunteers. And we do it because we are concerned about keeping our neighborhood strong and vital. Vacant, a vacant building in a neighborhood or adjoining the neighborhood is not a good thing. If I were to take any of you on a tour of McKinley School with ceilings falling down, friable asbestos in the building, the portable, there are 12 portable classrooms on the property. You know how they look. Inside, it's a nightmare. The ceilings have collapsed. The heavy smell of mildew in those buildings or in those portable units. So the intention here was very, very good. It was sincere. It was about supporting a neighborhood. The problem with, I would love nothing more than single-family homes on this property. But no developer is coming along that's going to spend $150,000 to purchase a lot. That property, it's almost five acres. That property could have been subdivided into 10 lots the same size as lots in Washington Heights. There would be over $200,000 needed in infrastructure to put in sewers, utilities, public right-of-way. The asbestos alone is probably over $200,000 just to remove that. We have a quote of about $60,000 to remove the portables. And with the purchase price, because that's what the property was valued at, and they were ready to sell it to another school. It was, a charter school had bid on the building. And they were going to pay 1.2 million for the property. I did not think that this was the best idea. And consequently, I will take responsibility for promoting the idea of turning this into unique condos that range in size from 943 feet, square feet, to 2,500 square feet. There are a number of people that are interested in living in this project. And I'm sorry, Mr. Focassi, but this was discussed and most of this PowerPoint, with the exception of the renderings, was shown on September 24, 2018. It was brought up again on March 4 of 2019. So I'm sorry that either you were out that night or don't recall it. But in order to make this project work, you need a certain amount of density. And so what is proposed, and by the way, I hate carports. So what is proposed is to have two-car garages for every unit. So there are, they're called carriage houses, but they're very nicely designed. Mr. Sims is here from SDG and Associates. You might stand up, Wesley Sims, I want to introduce him. This is the architect record on this proposal. And so because I think carports are ugly and they're subject to vandalism, we asked for garages, two-car garages. If these were low-rent apartments, you wouldn't get a two-car garage. I don't want this city to be undersold. There were people, if you, those of you that followed the construction of the 42 West at Twelve Mile and Southfield. Those apartments rent from $1,600 to $2,300 a month. We insisted on garages. Those apartments, there were people that said, "Oh, no, I won't ever pay those rents." There were people who said, "We don't need more apartments." But what I hear from realtors is that people want new. They want new floor plans, they want granite, they want stainless steel appliances. They want amenities that are not found in many of our existing apartments. Those apartments, 114 units were built and they rented in 90 days. 90 days, every one of them rented. And people are paying those rents. Then Spring Haven Villa on Southfield Road, a little farther north. This was a condo project by Centrex Homes. Centrex sold to Lombardo Homes, which after the crash, bought the, bought out the property. They built 123 units. They are now, they were pre-leased and every one of them is occupied. And they are paying $2,400 a month with a two-car garage, stainless steel kitchen, all of these amenities, they're very, very nice units. This is the kind of housing that I want for Southfield. I don't, I do not want to be for us to undersell our community. This, I am more than happy to discuss with the neighborhood your input. Again, this was always a proposal. It has to go through the planning commission. It has to go through city council. Certainly, we can abandon this project. I don't, I really don't favor that. But, you know, if that, but no one's going to build, just know, no one is going to build single-family homes at $150,000 per lot. It's just not, not going to happen. So I am a, my whole adult life has been spent in Southfield. I am not... I am not going anywhere. And yes, whoever said it, in 1984, like many other people, some people buy a cottage up north, I bought for 169,000 an apartment in Scottsdale, Arizona. Is that a crime? I don't think so. And I, I go and visit occasionally, but I resent that, that reference, that I am profiting on this or anyone else and that fortunately, I was able to buy a vacation home. So I love Southfield. I'm going to stay here. I have no plans to go anywhere and I'm very happy to meet with the neighborhood and discuss this further.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Frasier.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Frasier.
Mr. Chairman.
I have the floor. Thank you. I'm going to keep this short. I understand the passion that you brought to the microphone tonight, but it's, to me, it's kind of the fear of change. And the thing that I really want to talk about is not, not the plan, but there were several people that came to the microphone and insinuated that there may be conflict of interest. And that's pretty, to me, that was a dagger that came to me. You see us on Monday nights at this meeting, maybe in the other room, but each one of us council members has several other jobs that we work on during the week on different things to make the city a strong city. And it just so happens that the mayor and Mr. Montalbom and Mr. Zorn happen to be on the nonprofit board. They don't get paid extra for that and the amount of work that we put in won't even come up to, we do get a salary for being on council, but the amount of work that we put in to make this city a strong city doesn't meet minimum wage standards. So it's passion on our part, too, to make this a strong city. So it bothers me a bit that, quite a bit, that people come to the microphone and insinuate that there's conflict of interest and that we're profiting from being on these boards that we're working for the city at no, no compensation. I think people need to understand what conflict of interest is. And that is, you get a material or a financial benefit from the work that you're doing. And that's just not happening. So I want to make sure that people understand, understood that, that better, you really need to be careful when you come to the microphone and throw those kind of statements out. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frasier. All right, Mr. Fercassi.
No, no, I won't get into debate with the mayor.
All right.
You know, if I could just add one other thing, very briefly.
Mayor, let me tell me.
A goal of mine.
Mayor.
Excuse me.
Just a moment, when you tell me I don't do my homework.
I didn't say you didn't do your homework. I said you didn't, perhaps you didn't remember those two other occasions when this was presented.
Very lightly, if, if it was not.
I will show you the minutes, Mr. Fercassi.
Well, show me.
So I have the floor, so, excuse me, sir. I have the floor.
Take the floor.
All right. I want to add that one of our, the goals of the nonprofit housing corporation, this city, more than any other community in Open County, during the mortgage crisis and financial meltdown, we had at any one time 1,600 vacant homes in Southfield. Our property values went in the toilet. We lost a billion dollars in SEV in this community and mortgage companies and banks were dumping homes for 10, $20,000, including homes in Washington Heights. And the goal has been to increase property values. And we're succeeding at that. As was mentioned in the last meeting, Business Insider listed 25 communities in the United States, suburban communities, where property values have gone up exponentially. Southfield is number 10. In the last five years, property values have increased 78.2% in the city of Southfield. This is good for anybody who owns a home. Because if you had tried to sell your home during the financial crisis, you know what the price, the kind of sacrifice you would have made. So this is, this is extremely, this is the motivation for this, to keep our property values up and to keep our neighborhood strong. Thank you.
All right, so again, we're tabling item D to a later date. We'll discuss it at our next president's meeting.
Well, if I may, I believe we need to, do, do we want to set it to a date uncertain or a date certain? A date uncertain, I believe we have to publish in another public hearing. A date certain, we can just discuss it at a, a later date. I'd refer to the experts, but.
I think we should.
How much time do we need before you guys can have a meeting?
Yeah, it should be a date uncertain because we have to have the meeting first, I think.
We could always do a date certain, you know, we can, we can go out several meetings, I believe.
But I want to see some tentative outline when this is coming back, some kind, some kind of tentative outline where this is coming back to be implemented, because this is, the brownfield is a, is a necessary incentive for anybody to develop something. So I want to see a tentative outline of when we're going to deal with this.
Correct. And even if the brownfield, let's say we push it out a month or two and it, and it passes, but nothing gets done on the site, then nothing, nothing comes of it anyway. Again, this is just if, if the, if, if remediation is to take place, this is the tool to help it. So I'm fine pushing it off. I'm just saying that anyone that comes in that's going to do the work is going to ask for a brownfield, but we can schedule it either far enough in advance with a date certain that we can have a neighborhood meeting, or we can do a date uncertain, but I, but again, with the date uncertain, we need another public hearing. Is that correct?
I believe so, but if you did, the, if you did the date uncertain, you could still properly notify everyone. The cost is very insignificant for another public hearing, so it's just what the, the pleasure of the, of the body, it's tomato, tomato.
Well, if we do a date certain and then, and we're not ready at that date, we can still choose another date, right?
If we did a date certain, it would still need that, that would be the public hearing, so you're.
We, we wouldn't, if we did a date certain, we wouldn't have another public hearing.
I think you would have to send notifications to all the tax jurisdictions. That's the big change.
That's the, that's the change, right.
And again, if, if, if I could just weigh in on the date certain, then you're letting the audience know tonight that it's going to be discussed again at a future date. And as a courtesy, it could be re-notified, but you've already held the public hearing tonight. So you, you need a motion, one way or the other, but if you put it to a date certain, you're preserving the ability to make a decision at a future date without starting from beginning. You can always postpone it at that point, as, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So. Mr. Chair, I'd like to see, we'll do a date certain and we, we'll give a tentative outline of something, we could always cancel it at that point in time if we're not ready. But I just want to see things moving and we will have something on the wall to let us know this, this is coming up. That's, that's, that's what we're doing, okay. Do you think that's too far? What about October 7?
Well, we were looking at the 21st.
Mr. President, the, October 7th is a COW, so maybe the 21st or the 28th.
21st. Okay. So can we get a motion on that then?
I'd like to make a motion that we.
Support?
Yeah.
All right. The move of Ms. Moore, supportive of Ms. Taylor.
We'll move the meeting to the 21st.
That we, that we move item D, the Brownsville redevelopment plan for the former McKinley School, to a date certain of October 21st. Are there any other questions?
What we're doing is we're, we're actually postponing action on the, the public, the public hearing because they talked, we talked, but we didn't take any actions. So what we're doing is we're postponing the action on public hearing until October 31st.
Yeah. With that friendly amendment there. Are there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No? You all will be noted, but you know right now, the date is set for 21st. All right. All right, we have one more site plan to go over, item B.
Through the chair. This is a PSP 19-0007, which is a site plan review request of Jackson Dawson Cityscape Architects on behalf of the owner, Ari L Enterprises, Inc., to demolish an existing retail building on the site and construct a 3,002 gross square foot Comerica Bank with associated parking and other onsite amenities. Property located at 29333 Northwestern Highway. The existing facility includes approximately 8,000 square foot, one-story retail, a former retail establishment that is vacant. It also has a large office complex and a smaller office building to the north. Existing conditions. And this is the proposed new Comerica Bank elevation and prototype. And I'm going to invite the Cityscape Architects to take you through the actual elevations, the site plan and the proposed interior development. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have after that.
For the petitioner.
So my name is Ari Liebowitz. I'm the president of Ari L Enterprises and I represent the current ownership of the real estate. I got with me representative of the architect as well as the engineers in case there are some specific questions to, from the board. The property in question used to be the old Roxanne Jewelers. A few people can relate to that. The building has been vacant for about five years now and to some degree, it's obsolete. And we're excited to bring onboard a business of the caliber of Comerica Bank. This particular building is going to be the flagship building of the new prototype that they're looking to roll out in Michigan and, and other, throughout other states where they have a presence. And we've been working with them for almost a year in achieving what we brought in front of you today. We meet all the requirements from a standpoint of ordinances, as it relates setback, parking and previous, previous ratios. And in essence, we are reducing somewhat the footprint as it relates to previous and previous situation. And we are, we are really excited about bringing them from Farmington Hills, which is relocating an existing branch to this site. And we hope that you will support this particular redevelopment. I'm here to answer any questions you might have and I look forward to your decision. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'm going to ask the architect to just talk about the interior layout.
Sure, absolutely.
And the elevation.
Let me just add one more thing. I didn't give you the address. Our business is at 29355 Northwestern Highway, which is one of the building in the back. Ari L has been a resident of the city of Southfield for over 40 years and we've got a pretty good reputation in delivering what we promise. So thank you again.
All right, thank you. And sir, could you also give your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Luke Woods. I, pardon, thank you much. I work on behalf of Cityscape Architects. We are located at 40850 Grand River Avenue, Suite 200. That is in Novi, Michigan, 48375. I definitely appreciate the introduction and the lead-in from Ari Liebowitz. To Mr. Crowe's point, the, speaking on the exterior of the building here, as he had mentioned, we're looking to demo the existing. Comerica's looking for a fresh take here on some of their exterior materials, including some wood to bring a presence of hominess to the building. And you can see the blue aluminum metal panels on the setting of the building. These kind of focus the customer interaction points at the entrance and as people go through the drive-through. Transitioning over to the interior and what some of the intents are with this, the, Comerica's new refocusing is really on customer engagement and a sense of community and really customer retention. As you can see with, oh, perfect. Over here, they have the podium over just to the, to the bottom left of the vestibule. You'll be greeted at the door. At that point, they offer you a coffee, a warm drink. They meet you on a variety of different seating options, including lounges and sofas. They talk options with you depending on what your reason is to attend the branch that day. It's really a fresh take and, yeah, a revitalization of what their customer interaction had been previously.
All right, thank you. Mr. Crowe. Yes. In, in your write-up at the time, one of the conditions was the receipt of a waiver for the zoning board appeals for five and a half feet of landscaping in the front yard. That comment was taken by the planning commission and the applicant has moved the building back and does not need a waiver for the landscaping. So there are no waivers required. Could you just show the concept of the interior, which is the next slide?
Yeah, so here's a rendering showing the interior of the building. Over on the left is the vestibule over at the door. This is taken from the view of someone sitting in the lounge chairs. Over on the right is the, a rethinking of the teller station. It's a standing podium-style engagement. People can come up and, you know, review the screens, get the trans, cash transaction or whatever they're looking for to happen here. To piggyback on some of the other comments, the, the Public Art Fund, yeah, Comerica's looking to invest in the community both with a long lease agreement here, that and they see Southfield as an optimal location for this flagship to be rolled out. Furthermore, they're looking to invest in the community with a, by making a donation to the public art requirement. We've established that fund working with, align, working with the planners. I definitely appreciate their efforts.
And, and this went to the site plan committee of the council. It seems like a long time ago, but 5 o'clock earlier today. And they did recommend approval.
Oh, did it? Okay, very good. All right, council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Fercassi.
I'd just like to mention that Councilman Brightwell and Councilman Montalbom, we met at 5 o'clock on the set plan committee. It was unanimous vote for this.
Okay, very good. Yep, Mr. Frasier.
Does this have a drive-through?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Through the site plan. Through the chair, there are two drive-through tellers and an escape lane on the south side or exterior.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Montalbom.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP 19-0-
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP 19-0007.
Support. They're moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Taylor, that we approve site plan PSP 19-0007. Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We really are excited, looking forward to the redevelopment.
Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
If you could give me a minute, I'm gonna... I'm gonna... I'm gonna close out the overhead.
Okay. My next portion of the meeting is Communications. And again, before we start, I just want to just remind everyone, if you don't have a copy of your... of the agenda with you, if there weren't any left, just as it relates to the parameters of what we do during Communications. And I'll just read this brief statement that "No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or their duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If the person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council. And they may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting." So, again, this is... and that statement is all in an effort to maintain orderly and calm meetings. We don't need to get up here yelling at people or throwing accusations at folks. We're here to hear from you, take your concerns, and do the best that we can to continue to address them. With that being said, our first request for communication is Pamela Gerald.
When we table something, we need to stop talking about it. That was a little bit too long. All this extra stuff. I just want to get right to the point of what I'm going to talk about. If you remember several years ago, I told the city that we should not be in the real estate business. You guys didn't listen to me, and you decided to go into the real estate business. You found money with one of the departments, and you bought Northland for $2.4 million. You also took $3.1 million to buy the most expensive vacant parking lot in the city of Southfield, the county of Oakland, the state of Michigan, and quite possibly even the United States. When we purchased the most expensive parking lot, we didn't have an RFP until about 2015. And what we talked about was retail development. We talked about hotel and something very high-end. Now, you guys are entertaining the option from a company called Bestec to put apartments across the street. Now, you just went back and forth about wanting apartments in the city when you got Slum Sapphire, and you've been giving them time after time, chance after chance, to get it done, and they still haven't gotten it done. They've got asbestos over there, leaking water, no air, no heat. And you guys have cited them and cited them and cited them. For what? To do a closed session tonight. So, why don't the Southfield nonprofit housing take the money and buy Sapphire and do what you want to do in these people's neighborhood? So, I want to talk about the fact that Bestec did not go through the process. They did not meet the criteria for the RFP, which is to set the standard for the developers, for the site, to develop the site. And it has to fall into the city's master plan. Have you guys done your research on Bestec? Every single property that they have, go on Google and look at the reviews. They are as slum as Sapphire. We do not want what they're proposing across the street from City Hall. We want to see upscale retail, like you talked about. We want to see some kind of upscale hotel. We do not want apartments across from City Hall. You've got 5,000 Town Center. You've got River Place right across the street next to Fuddruckers. Why don't you take Sapphire and do that? You guys are not doing the right thing. How do you allow a company not to go through the process? And I'm going to keep talking about this over and over again. You guys have blindsided us.
Your time is up.
And you need to handle your business.
Your time is up. Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, tonight, I would like to talk about Section 11.11. Section 11.11 in the Southfield City Charter. 11.11 is entitled "Public Records." Section Point 111. Section 11.11 contains just one sentence, just one short sentence, and I quote, "All records of the municipality shall be public." Unquote. Four weeks ago, on July 15, 2019, at this city council, I raised the issue of citizens having to file a FOIA request, that is, a Freedom of Information Act request, just to view or get a copy of the Northland Steering Committee minutes. My wife Pamela Gerald had to do this in the past, plus pay a fee to boot. At the council meeting of July 22, 2019, the city clerk mentioned that the Northland Steering Committee's minutes are now online. And sure enough, they are now online. All three and a half years worth are now contained within the software package called Documents on Demand. Now, there are approximately 30 other boards and commissions' minutes, plus the remaining council subcommittee minutes that should now be added to Documents on Demand, thus making Southfield's government much more transparent than in the past. Thank you. Oh, by the way, Mr. Chairman, does my wife get her FOIA money back? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next request for recognition is Sonia Simpson Gardner. Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
21685 Verugewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. The name is Stacy Jackson. Well, this is a first, that I've come to the lectern twice in one night. But I couldn't sit down without saying, first of all, Mr. Ficassi, I believe you are the one councilperson, as I mentioned last week, that always spars with me. But as in most good fights, the challenge is always respecting the opponent and knowing when to agree to disagree and knowing when to say you're right. I applaud you today for saying that the residents that came to speak here tonight were right to have this tabled. I applaud you on that. Secondly, I'd like to say that the city really has to shy away from this profit-driven mentality when you're losing focus and touch and faith of your people. I've heard today that there is no investor that would be willing to invest $150,000 on a lot. But we well know that a few weeks ago, that's precisely what the investors were doing in the Lockmore community when they said, "We want you to build houses that are comparable to what is already there." They're purportedly spending that much and more for lots, for single-family homes. Now, the other thing I'm concerned about is finding folks or donations that can contribute $150,000 or plus to get rid of asbestos when we just accepted a donation for someone to dump over $200,000 worth of rocks in a park. You know, there is a such thing of creative thinking and being future-forward and creative processes. I don't think that it's the residents, Mr. Fraser, that is afraid of change. What we are is being forced to change without our consent or without our inclusion. Change is always constant. We all know that. So, it's not change that we're afraid of. It's being forced to change without us being included in the process of doing so. There is a reason why you all are sitting up there. It's because we entrusted you with the public trust. I have come before you for several months trying to appeal to your moral compass. And today, we are exactly where I feared we would be. The residents in front of you are losing faith in you. That's mightier than any dollar you can earn, any dollar you can find when you are supposed to be public officials. It's time for us really to take a good look at who we are and who it is we wish to be because we are losing touch of our own realities here. Thank you.
Thank you. You said Mr. Harris is not here today, Ms. Jackson? Okay. I'm sure. All right, our next request for recognition is Toby Rhodes.
Toby Rhodes, 17001 New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, 48075, You know, you make that statement about you can't do this and you can't do that. That's not a sign that you're in control, that you have respect of the community. And because I remember when I first started talking here seven years ago, when it was five minutes, those kind of statements didn't need to be made. That means that you're getting a lack of confidence in the community that I'm glad to see finally. And it's going to come a time when you're going to need the support of the community. A crisis will come, a disruption will come, and you're going to need support to show people outside of Southfield that the city of Southfield is a credible operation. And you're not going to get it because all you do is you threaten people. You don't say, like... I remember that time when I was speaking about the police department, and you tried to publicly humiliate me. And you never, in the 10 years that I've been fighting you clowns, did you ever come and speak to me privately? Never. You never said like a man, "Hey, can we work this out?" Not in 10 years. And so now, here you are in this situation where you're running the city into the ground. I mean, we look at Northland. Northland is a mess. You're talking about losing land deals. I hear homosexuals talking about, "Oh, we need this in Southfield." Well, we also need Northland. I mean, it's the only tourist attraction in the city. And you lost it. And you've been running it into the ground for four years. And now you're talking about, "Oh, I know land deals." But the main reason why I came up here today, because I don't need to tell you, because you're just hard-headed, is that there was a Zionist in the city council who said that... He mentioned the Holocaust twice. And then he said, "There's no race problem in Southfield," which is an insult to every black person in Southfield.
Yes. Mr. Rhodes?
What?
Mr. Mandelbaum, would you like...
Hey, you're taking my time here.
Yep.
You're taking my time.
You're not following the decorum with this.
No, but he said that at a city council meeting.
You're not going to call names to anybody in the council.
No, no, he said there was no race problem.
You've already done it twice. Now, you say anything like that again, we're going to ask you to...
So, you're going to disrespect the black community? You are disrespecting the black community. I am the spokesman for the black community. You disrespecting the black community?
I'm black too, man.
No, no, you're not black. If you're attacking the black community, you're making a stand against black people.
You give one more derogatory term.
No, you disrespecting the black community? Are you disrespecting the black community?
You can feel if you want... feel that if you like.
Oh, so you are disrespecting the black community?
You can say that.
Okay, so you're disrespecting the black community? Okay, fine. I'm going to build my own platform because I see that the black community needs a voice in Southfield. And I need to counter all these lies and all these assaults and abuse that you heave on the black community in Southfield. You treat us like a second-class citizen. I guess you think you're better than the rest of us. You think you're a special person. You think the rules don't apply to you. You think you don't have to follow the code of conduct. Well, okay, you think that now, you have in your term. But you know, I mean, you've only been here five years. I've been here 30. So, I know how Southfield operates. And so, you think you're just going to disrespect me? I never disrespected you. I never... And you're defending this guy who was speaking against the black community. You are. I mean, you do know that they're going to post this on the web. I can use this with black people all around the country to show what you're about.
You go right ahead.
Right. And you say that now until you've got to deal with the consequences. And you're like, "Oh, could you not do that?" I've done with those over and over again. I mean, everybody's big and bad until they have to deal with the consequences. I mean, you're the face of the failure in Southfield. And I'm glad that you made it clear that you do not represent or speak for the black community so that when this city is running to the ground, I give it another couple of years. Something really bad's going to happen, and you're not going to be able to cope with it. And you're going to be looking for help. But like you just said, "Oh, I don't need the black community. I can oppose the black community in Southfield. I'm better than the black community." All right? See where it gets you.
Our next request for recognition is Lamuel Benjamin King.
How are you all? 16280, Northland Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48075. Well, I have come to this platform because of, I mean, to fight back. I... and I will say religious discrimination and wrong possession and some form of defamation that I've discovered from the community. Just to introduce myself, I... I worked over the years for international organizations. And I came... I worked for so many war organizations, the United Nations and other group, the Salvation Army for 18 years. I came over to this city to do my doctor's degree, which I have completed already. And I raised funds for this city with the Salvation Army. Every year, I have to raise an 8,000 million to serve the people of Southfield. But in recent time, after going for my degree, got through it, I have experienced so many abuse. I called Jeremy Moss. I spoke with him. They told me they could not do anything. I tell you that even today, I sleep on the street in my car. The snow that poured through this week, I mean, this winter, I slept through that snow. I have been abused from the church. I have been abused from the library. I have been falsely accused by people to the police. And this thing, I have not experienced it. In all my years, I have traveled 12 countries. Southfield, America is the first country. I came here legally. I am not somebody foolish. I'm a doctor's degree holder. And I've come to wash the people of Southfield to respect the dignity of immigrant. When we travel over here, we have not... we are people of pride. We are people of integrity. We are people of value. We are choosing opportunity sometime for our people and for where we find ourselves. So, when we come into community and area and find ourselves being abused, falsely accused, and discriminated, it reflects a bi-picture or image of the place where we live. Thank you all.
Our next request for recognition is Jessica... I can't really read the last name. I don't know if that's... Smith? I believe. Oh, Brentley, okay. Not here? Okay, I thought that was her. Our next request for recognition is Stephanie English. Our next request for recognition is Stephanie English. You can go right ahead, Ms. English.
Stephanie English, 28735 San Carlos, 48076 Southfield, Michigan. The packet is actually my evidentiary statements for the issue pertaining to the police chief selection. I have always been a supporter of the police department, and with our last selection with Chief Eric Hawkins, I did the same thing in terms of requesting through the FOIA process all of the resumes of the police chief applicants. This year, I started in January to complete the same thing. In May, the first week in May, I received all of the finalist applications. There were four of them via the FOIA process, and I began analyzing all of the resumes, as I have done in the past. I also observed the June 3 community interview process, and my concerns are this. That particular packet includes information that shows that there were fraudulent identifiers of qualifications for Elvin Baron that was submitted by our city administrator. They are now permanently part of the July 8 approved minutes, and I have a concern about the transparency of the process. Also, too, as I have pointed out, there are scores that show that possibly the, there was mathematical manipulation of the scores to ensure that Elvin Baron was the highest candidate. I am race neutral. I started contacting various council members in the wintertime prior to the final candidates being selected. I asked, and the various councilpersons know, as well as Fred Zorn, because I submitted the same questions to him via Mike Mannion through the communications department. Was, what was the direction this year for the chief? Were they going to specifically pick a black chief, or were they going to pick, be race neutral in their decision? Once you tell me you're race neutral, then I'm expecting for best candidate to apply, and that means that Brian Basset, if he is the top candidate, he should be selected. A race-neutral qualification process is just that. I don't have enough time in this meeting. I encourage people to go to YouTube. I have uploaded that June 3 meeting so that you can assess the performance between Elvin Baron and Brian Basset, who are the top candidates. Also, actually, Elvin Baron, I have a concern, because he came in third in the academic credentials and the internal interview. Recently, and I have to cut to the chase, I have done this for all of the candidates, there is a felony criminal misdemeanor charge in Virginia for Elvin Baron. And I would ask Elvin Baron, there is no ill will or malice toward you? I would simply like to know on your application, if you answered yes or no to, have you ever been arrested or convicted for a minor traffic violation?
Your time is up. Thank you. Next request for recognition is Joseph Person.
Joseph Person, 25270 Waycross, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor Seiver, Mr. President Cruz, city clerk, the administration. You know, I just want to thank you all for the decision for picking Chief Elvin Baron. You chose the right person for the right time to do the right thing for the right city, the city of Southfield. I'm not going back. And as a person that's from the East Coast, my family are connected to all of these different city governments all along the East Coast, Virginia and everywhere, including where Chief Baron had that situation with the ticket. Well, according to my people that looked at this, it looked like it was BW, you know, that DWB, driving while you were black, or whatever the situation was. That was 25 years ago. We cannot go back. And yes, I looked at the YouTube, but I was here. Three of the questions that were asked from that panel up there, Chief Barrett, never looked at us. That's the first thing. The second thing is, when they asked him at the end of the question, they said, "Is there anything you want to tell us?" He started talking about his father's church and how they feed 300 people. That has nothing to do with city of Southfield. This gentleman here, when I went to the debate for two nights down at the Fox Theater, I talked to 33 different police officers, and I'm not even talking about Detroit. I'm talking about, I heard one police officer up in Midland was talking about they'll walk through glass for this man. I heard state troopers. And even a police chief, a police lieutenant is talking about a police chief in another city is getting ready to retire. And they're talking about getting, you know, they wanted him, they hoped they could get him to come to that, you know, city and be their police chief. Folks, let me tell you all something. I don't like issues where everybody want to holler "race neutral." And we always got to holler because we black folks. This city is, what, 75, 80% African-American? We got a white mayor. We got a white city administrator. We're represented in terms of the community, in terms of all that race neutral. Okay, but if we choose as a black people that this is what we want, fine, the man was good. He was head and shoulders in terms of the interview. That's, I don't know about all of this other stuff that other people are talking about, but here's the issue. If you do not like what he did, you got, you can do this. Go get a nominating petition, run for city council, get your 200 signatures, turn them in, and replace y'all. And then you can get the people that you want to put in the person that you want. I'm okay with what y'all did, and some of y'all that I was not going to vote for, I got your back to make sure you get back. And the difference between me and some of these people out here, I go out there and knock on 12,000 doors for you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Sarah Habbo.
Sarah Habbo. Actually, I didn't come up here to speak about what I'm going to speak about, but I just wanted to make one thing clear. Blacks Law Dictionary defines a conflict of interest as a real or seeming incompatibility of one's private interests and one's public or fiduciary duties. It doesn't define it as anything to do specifically with finances. It's about duties in a private role and in a public role. And if the city council president can appoint or remove somebody from the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, then that is a government body, and it should be subject to the Open Meetings Act. And if that's the case, when are those meetings held so that residents are available to attend those meetings to be able to decide, to be able to speak and ask questions while those meetings are held? I've been asking this for probably two years now, and I haven't gotten a response about why the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation is not subject to the Open Meetings Act. And frankly, if the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation now appears to be a legislative body representing the city, then any of its partners, they're all quasi-government bodies, and they should all also be subject to the Open Meetings Act. And so residents should be made aware of when those meetings are held, where those meetings are held, so that they can be present for the discussions that happen in these closed doors that suddenly come to these city council meetings, and an entire neighborhood has to take time away from their families to tell you not to do the wrong thing. I know we talk about politeness and decorum and all of those things. We owe each other honesty, truth. That's what we owe each other. We don't just owe each other pleasantries. You have to speak the truth, and when you are in a position of power, you have to speak truth to power. That's your job on city council. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Richard Meltzer.
Richard Meltzer, 20850 Wink in Southfield. I'm here tonight to support Stephanie English and Officer Brian Basset. Ms. English is a hard-working investigator who is not afraid to speak truth to power. She has uncovered discrepancies in the reported background and credentials of the new chief, though the specifics are currently being investigated and awaiting FOIAs. We know that Officer Basset did attend the National FBI Academy. There's some uncertainty as to whether Mr. Baron did. And also, the question is asked, why were all the other candidates only from the Detroit Police Department? But here's one thing I know for sure. I was personally in attendance the night of the public interviews, and there is no doubt in my mind, or in the mind of others with whom I've spoken, that Officer Basset was clearly the most articulate and well-informed candidate. But even if there is some disagreement on that point, for him to receive a poor grade, the lowest grade, tied with a candidate whose performance was plainly deficient, is a clear indication that the process was rigged. Officer Basset's scores on all the other dimensions of the attribute matrix exceeded those of the newly-named chief. Therefore, the only way for Officer Basset to mathematically lose was to seriously downgrade his presentation score in order to lower his overall grade average. Check the videos. Officer Basset is of Southfield, raised and educated here, been on the police force for years, and has been acting chief. So by what justification was Officer Basset not promoted to chief? What pressures were brought to bear? We want answers to these questions. Remember the DEQ public hearing when they wanted to drill for oil and gas in Southfield? They ultimately approved the drilling despite a large public protest. The public hearing was just another sham, a dog and pony show. And it appears that Southfield has now done the same thing with these bogus interviews. As Ms. English, who is a black woman, has previously written, "If Brian Basset was a black man, he would have been appointed the new chief in a minute." But Officer Basset is white, so it seems we are talking about racism, pure and simple. Racism comes in different flavors, all of them distasteful. Dr. King's message is to protest racism wherever you find it. As he said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. It is not too late for Southfield, but failure to remedy this situation and rescind the recent appointment will escalate this case and draw the involvement of other agencies such as the EEOC. The city runs the risk of major embarrassment and considerable cost in financial statements.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Hassan Jawad.
Good evening. Hassan Jawad, 25212 Evergreen Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48075. Phone number 2483564960. I, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's been some time since I've been to a council meeting, but I have to say, I'm really impressed by and proud of the Southfield residents who have showed up tonight and have voiced their opinions and views. Again, my name is Hassan Jawad. I am the owner of the City Center Plaza and City Center 2, which was the first mixed-use development in the Southfield City Center. For those of you who are not familiar with these developments, these are on Evergreen and home to such establishments as the CK Mediterranean Grill, Zoop, and Los Casualos Mexican Restaurant. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the power of the people in this city and how strong we are as a community, and more specifically in regards to the EverCenter site. My fellow residents, during our June 24 council meeting, we were blindsided with a plan for the EverCenter site, or as many of affectionately refer to it, as the parking lot across the street from City Hall. As many of you know, we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars researching and planning and discussing the creation of a city center to compete with neighboring communities, but there were no neighborhood meetings or feedback relative to this site. I use the word blindsided because the plan presented, one, bypassed all three RFP processes that have taken place since 2015, as well as all the requirements of those RFPs. Two, the plan presented is predominantly a residential plan that does not incorporate our vision of creating a mixed-use site that would serve as an attraction and retention mechanism for residents, businesses, and the ever-growing LTU student population. Three, the proposed residential plan is presented by a company that has an online rating of 1.9 stars. I don't know who did the due diligence in regards to them, and I don't want to bash a company that's not here to defend itself, but you can look for yourself. The plan bypassed the RFP process and was never presented to the City Center Advisory Board or stakeholders in the city who have spent and invested millions of dollars over the years. I'm proud to say that I have been in the city center and have, I'm sorry. I'm proud to say that I have been involved in multiple successful projects in the city center today. City Center Plaza, City Center 2 have both been successful projects within the city center. Other developments like Vibe Credit Union, Travelers Terrace, Arbor Lofts are additional projects that meet the vision for our city. Ultimately, what we ended up with was a letter of intent with absolutely no input from the community and a 60-day due diligence period, which is going to come up in-
Your time is up, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Nathan Page.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Nathan. I live at 28307 Everett.
Can you pick up the microphone a little bit?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Nathan Page, and I live at 28307 Everett in Southfield. And I'm disturbed, or I'm disturbed by the process with appointing the chief, new chief of police. And it's nothing personal, sir. I met you at the golf outing this morning. You seem like a really nice guy. Thank you for coming out. But it's, the HR department and, you know, your job listing had some very strong, you know, strongly recommended job, not requirements, but recommendations. And I'm not saying he's not qualified, but from looking at the resumes from the FOIA requests, he's just not the most qualified that was picked. I mean, you know, it's apparently, it seems from the history that the department's had of sending officers to the FBI National Academy, going back a long time, it's something that it seems like the police department values. But, I mean, I guess the HR department and, you know, and the administrator of the council didn't value that as strongly, along with the School of Staff and Command, to certifications that Deputy Chief Basset had, that he doesn't. I'm concerned that you guys went 11% over your price, your budget recommendation for the hiring. I'm concerned about misleading information on the synopsis of the resume provided to the council at the approval or the recommendation a month ago, stating some things that were on his resume that weren't. It's, I mean, I'd hate to call, you know, they're not typos. Typos is, you know, I'm 5'11". If I lie to a girl on a dating site and say I'm six foot tall, that's a typo. Saying I went to college when I didn't is, you know, that's misleading. I'm concerned with council, for lack of better wording, rubber-stamping the approval or the recommendation when a year ago, when Mr. Seiver recommended a new city attorney, you guys tabled the discussion and waited a month before you approved it. But, you know, it's a month ago, you had a misleading resume, people that dissented, people that weren't here, and somehow still forced the vote.
Time is up, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Our next request for recognition is Latina Denson.
Thank you. My name is Latina Denson, and I am a certified, I mean, a Southfield resident. I'll get that. I am, first of all, I had a stroke, so please give, thank you. Please be brief, I mean, be-
They can't hear you.
Please be patient with my speech. You know me as a urban planner and a planning commissioner. However, I'm just talking as a representative for the COSA today, and, you know what? I was going to talk, and I'm still going to talk about what I was going to talk about, but I'm just emotionally drained about this particular meeting. Anyway, back to what I was intending to do. We are making plans for the Southfield to be an age-friendly community. And we are looking at eight domains. Planning for transportation, housing, respect and inclusion, participation, communication, employment, health services, and outdoor spaces in buildings. And if you don't know what COSA is, it's the Commission on Senior Adults. And we had several meetings and community conversations at the City Hall. However, we want to come to the neighborhoods to have some impact, I mean, not impact, but some feedback and have your concerns answered, or at least talked about. So if you want to, if you want us to come to your neighborhood or your community, you can reach Rhonda Terry at-
Okay. Can you, yeah, just give us the number and everything, that'd be great. You got a phone number for us?
Yes.
Okay.
248-795-5, I mean, 4549. I mean-
795 or 786?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Our next request for recognition is Devine Owens. Devine Owens. I think most of these people may have left already, they were all from McKinley. Miss Karen Ledford. Kavanna Linton. Betty Smith.
I spoke, but I can still speak again.
It's up to you. Would you like to speak again, or are you okay?
No.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, next request for recognition is Gregory Keeler.
Gray Keeler, resident of Southfield. One of the things I was mentioning today was lessons learned. And so, some of you council members are new. And all the time you have been here, I've been complaining about the fact that I have no sewer line. So now, you have this new neighborhood that's about to get an apartment building stuck on it. Guess what I didn't have? A dorm stuck on my street. They stuck a dorm in the middle of a residential area, and then stuck it in there and did not stick a sewer line in it. So learn that lesson, that you may, that the city may say something and say they're going to do something. Was there any planning, looking at this whole process? Was there any planning put into place that should have had a sewer line going in with a septic tank? So if they tell y'all one thing in your neighborhood over there, learn the lesson from me. I've been complaining longer than you, some of you have been here. And have been complaining for the 17 or 19 years this process has been in place. Note, the last presentation that was given to you was from 2016. 2017, we had a meeting of the whole community and brought up all the problems in it. Still don't see no moving forward, do you? And when we talk about telling you, okay, if you don't bring up something, bring up something from 1999, when the problem started, not 17 years later. And even when you bring it up 17 years later, you can't go to the 18th year because you will still see there is a problem. So I say, do not let them move into your neighborhood or do anything in your neighborhood. Let my neighborhood be the example. Let the other neighbors who don't have a septic tank, or who don't have a sewer line, be an example. But if you look all around me, there's a sewer line.
Our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
Hello, my name is Harold Hill, PO Box 760163, Southfield, Michigan. And I had no plans to chime in on the discussions that were going on today, but I have to say one thing. We, the people of Southfield, truly believe in sharing their views. And I can appreciate that as a 29-year resident of Southfield, I think that's healthy, to be able to agree to disagree without being confrontational. And that's what this city should be about, be able to share your ideas without being confrontational. So what I really came here to talk about was just to say, thank you Parks and Rec, because I came before you and said that Lassiter Park didn't have benches for the seniors that live right next door. And the next day, they had benches out there at the park. And I wanted to say, Terry Fields and the crew, thank you, because it's not for me, but they want to go and have a place to sit. So I appreciate that. And there was one other thing that came to mind when I was talking about parks. I noticed that we have an overabundance of deer. And we had a study when Joan Seymour was around, I think two years ago, and we spent about $35,000 for this study. I never got any information on how that went, because a friend of mine just hit a deer. And I know it's an overpopulation of deer, definitely, because you can check with the AAA, who, just so the people will know, if you hit a deer, it's your fault, because they can't get the deductible out of the deer, and they consider it your fault. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Denise Stargill. Stargill? Stargill.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Denise Stargill. I live on Winchester Street. I'm here today because Winchester Street has become a safety issue. I have called the mayor's office several times, numerous of times, with my concern about Winchester. As a resident of Southfield, we were notified that they were going to do pavement of our roads. But with that came narrowing of the roads and a lot of traffic. And I was told that Winchester, because it runs from Evergreen to, was Lasher West to East to Evergreen, that it's not considered a residential road, it's considered a main road. But they now have put center yellow line markers in the road, in our street, which has taken away curb appeal. And the reason that I'm giving that they don't, were placed for speed control. But we recently had an incident, I don't want to, you know, say what happened on Winchester, which has created a lot of traffic. People are speeding. And I have at, I spoke with the mayor's office and also the head engineer and developer who was over the project of Winchester, if they could put up speed signs, children playing, people ride their bikes, if we could have bike signs. And no response, because I have grandchildren who ride their bikes, we have incidents where cars have jumped the curve. They come down Winchester 55, 60 miles an hour with their tops down. It is just a safety concern. So I'm coming before you, Mayor, and the City Council. I don't, God forbid, I don't want anything to happen to the residents of Winchester. I have almost gotten hit three times, getting my trash can, getting my mail, and trying to pick up trash in my street. I have, I wear bright clothes, it has happened three times. And please, can you do something, Mayor, about it, please? It's a safety issue. God forbid, like I said, kids are riding their bikes, then they put these extensions of, for the driveway where a car could hit the curve.
Your time is up now.
Yes, but please, please, Winchester, please.
I'm just going to add that on your last call, I was out with surgery, so I didn't get back to you. But I did report to the acting chief that I wanted that mobile sign, you've seen them, "Your Speed Is," posted on Winchester again.
Yes, that is there now.
The chief is here this evening, so he hears you, will ask for traffic control back there. I do want to tell you that I did talk to the city engineer today. The average speed on Winchester was clocked at 37 prior to the repaving of the road. It is now, it is about 20% slower. I'm not saying nobody is speeding. I'm not telling you that, I'm just telling you, on average, we're seeing more people go at a slower rate. But you're still, there's still people that go too darn fast. It's supposed to be-
Check that at 5 o'clock, and new chief, I tried to call the police department, non-emergency, no answer, because I wanted them to come at 5, between 5 and 7:30. It's like, fell out.
It's cut through traffic, trying to avoid-
Yes, and I have grandchildren, and I'm now everyone's grandmother on the street. And so, please, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Louis Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Louis Williams. I attended the special city council meeting last Monday, and I was pleased to hear the sale of the Northland property was being dealt with as a part of the meeting, and I was pleased to hear about some of the businesses that were being considered, or businesses that would come into play, such as hotels, restaurants, retail businesses, and even possibly an auto dealership, I believe. But I must say, I was disappointed to hear that a marijuana business was being considered, medical marijuana, as I understand. I feel very strongly we should not have a marijuana-selling business in our community, medical or otherwise. I asked the city council to sell that part of the property to some other business entity. Again, I don't think we need that kind of business in our community. I say, let them take that marijuana business to some other community. I asked the city council to not finalize that part of the sale of the Northland property. Certainly, there is some other business that, that portion of the property could be sold to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ends our communications portion of the meeting. Councilors, do you have anything else before we go into closed session? Mr. Fercasie?
Mr. Chairman, I see the chief has, the chief has left, but I just feel something has to be said, that we had a process that we went through. It's the administrator's position to hire the chief, it's confirmed by council. And to sit here and hear people talk about an employee of the city of Southfield, I don't care what the reason was, but I respect our chief, I respect the police department, and we are a team, and we're a family. We don't need the criticism of our people who are employed in the city of Southfield, do the great job that they're doing, and have the kinds of situations they have to deal with. We have the full support, I'm sure, of this council, and the full support of our chief. And let nobody even go down that road to try to hurt any individual employee of this city, especially those who head up a department.
Anybody else? Mr. Mendelbaum.
Thank you. Just very quick, two events that are coming up as the summer winds down, is the Parks and Rec Department is putting on a summer wine down. It will take place on the front lawn here at City Hall on Friday, August 23rd, from 6:00 to 9:30. It will be a free outdoor concert, and there will be food trucks, vendors, as well as a cash bar. Again, that will take place here in the front lawn, Friday, August 23rd, from 6:00 to 9:30. Also, on Wednesday, August 28th, the Parks and Rec is having the Senior Appreciation Night at the Berg Park. It's free for seniors 50 and up. There will be music- Um, the, there will be music, uh, food, and, uh, every year, it's always a, a good time is had by all. So again, that's Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, starting at six P.M. at the Burke Park for Senior Appreciation Night. Thank you.
I did have one other thing, Chief. Fred, you know, I was over at, um, party over there next door to Carpenter Lake. I took my wife over there to show her the rocks that are there. And somebody's got to go over there and, and do something. You know, it looks like these big boulders are in front of a big pile of weeds. In, in other words, you know, I don't know what they planted over there that they were so worried about putting in, uh, but there's some very unusual, uh, evergreens in there. But, you know, you got north of that and south of that, you have maybe thirty-six, forty-inch weeds. And I know that before this was in there, that was part of the environment. But when you put that in the middle of it, it looks like somebody either forgot to, to mow the grass or, or something, it, it just doesn't look pristine. It, it doesn't even show off the boulders that are there, because you come, come in and you're, and all these weeds, and then all of a sudden, you come into the boulders, then you have weeds again, and somebody cuts like two strips right next to the boulders, the rest are high weeds on both sides. And, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it should be either focused, or something so that people see it, it becomes kind of a monument-type of thing.
Okay.
But, but to be in the midst of weeds, it really doesn't mean it looks like somebody dumped some stuff there. So, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brightwell.
Uh, I'll be very brief. Typically, I have a couple of veteran things, given the lateness of the hour. Uh, I would just mention one that is time-sensitive. The VA, we have a National Minority Veteran Summit, September twenty-seventh through twenty-eighth in Dallas, Texas. Uh, and this will be the inaugural Minority Summit in Dallas. The VA secretary will be there, and they will have numerous breakout sessions. At another point in time, I will give more details, but if any individuals are interested, please reach out to me by way of the clerk's office, just dial that number, they can, uh, put you in touch with me. And plus, I will produce copies of these and have them on the, uh, front desk.
Yeah, Mr. Morris.
Yes, there were several comments made regarding our, the selection of our police chief, and I just wanted to give our city administrator an opportunity to respond, if you so choose to.
I'm sorry, to which question?
If you wanted to respond.
Regarding-
Regarding the police chief selection.
I was going to, under my portion, if I-
Okay.
Well, I, I did, I just wanted, I also wanted to echo what Mr. Ficassi said. I really think it was, I think it's been very unfair for those that have, uh, in my mind, you might even call it a tactic at this point. I think the chief went through a very rigorous process. Um, it was the most transparent process that anyone in the city has seen and in other cities have seen. And so, um, you know, whether, regardless of not whether your opinion was, one person may have been better than the other, all of them were qualified. Uh, we felt that, uh, the chief that we selected, uh, Fred ultimately selected and we approved, um, was the guy for us. And, um, you know, let's just give him a chance, uh, welcome him to the family, and let's, uh, continue to be the family that people always claim that we are. Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Ficassi, uh, Frazier, it's getting late, man.
Yeah.
You're starting to look like-
Because I don't know whether to, I'll just keep on talking. Um, yeah, I, I won't be long, but I support the same thing that, uh, Mr. Ficassi and, and Mr. Cruz have said about, uh, selection of the police chief. Uh, it is the city administrator's responsibility. And the things that no one has said when they're, they're doing criticism is, he went through a background check. And I trust the folks that do background checks on this on a regular basis, more so than research that an amateur does, just because their candidate didn't win. So, uh, I wholeheartedly support, uh, our city administrator's, uh, selection for police chief. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, very, um, briefly, we had a very, very successful, uh, Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival this, this weekend. The weather was totally cooperative, it wasn't too hot, uh, we had a nice breeze, and, uh, thousands of people showed up. And, um, I just want to acknowledge, um, the, uh, the staff that, um, made this happen on our half of the, of the, um, agreement we had with, uh, Kimmy Horn. Uh, so from the, um, Parks and Rec staff, uh, too many to mention, but particularly, I'd like to mention Terry Field, the director, John Thompson, and Jonathan Ron. Uh, from Public Works, um, Justin Beck in particular, and our CERT volunteers. Uh, the Police and Fire Department were there, both, both, uh, the chief, uh, fire chief and our new chief, uh, were there both nights. Uh, it was a great opportunity for Chief Baron to, uh, he mingled with the crowd and get to know, uh, our residents. Very pleased to see him and the officers there. We had extra protection this year because of recent events, uh, really stepped up, um, for that. And, um, then in my office, I particularly want to thank Vicky Perry, who, um, uh, did a lot of the, um, arrangements for the vendors and food trucks. Uh, so all in all, it was a very successful event. I know, uh, not everybody got to attend on the council, but those of you that did, I know can testify, uh, what a great evening, or two evenings that we had here. Thank you.
You were a volunteer, too.
Yes, and you were a volunteer.
Good job, Dan. Uh, Mr. Zorn?
Thank you. I, uh, would like to, uh, comment. The, uh, last, uh, two weeks, council's been, uh, received a number of emails, and as it's been discussed, the police chief is my appointment, and I've made the recommendation of Alvin Baron, uh, to council. You know, I've been cautioned to, to get into too many details on this. However, would like to simply say that as city administrator, I believe that we need to re- recognize this as an opportunity to bring some new ideas and ways of doing things in the city of Southfield. It was very clear that traffic detail was one of those items that people wanted to see, uh, and that's something we haven't, uh, had in, in the city in, in quite a while here. The, um, we do have a clean background check. And, and I, I'd like to, uh, you know, if, if it's all right, Mr. President, allow Mr. Baron to just introduce himself tonight on, on camera. I, uh, thank council for, for your remarks, but at, at the end of the day, I, I simply felt that we had an opportunity to bring some new ways of doing things in Southfield. And, you know, you could either accept the status quo, uh, or recognize and seize this opportunity to bring in a, a new individual. I, um, could move, move my comments in another direction, but I see no benefit in my critiques of, of one of the candidates. And I, I just don't believe that to be healthy. If pushed, I will do that. During this process, there were a number of failed threats, and some of the things happening are, in fact, uh, things that were told to me that would happen. Um, the extensive lobbying, I found incredibly offensive. And I'll, I'll stop there. I, I will, you know, on public record, they have my notes in this one page, I will be destroying tonight, but I can put them together at any time, if necessary.
Chief, would you like to-
For the record, Alvin Baron, Chief of Police, City of Southfield Police Department. So, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words to both this honorable body and our community. As you all know, a lot of inconsistent or inaccurate information being betrayed about me. But when it comes to being the police chief, you have to understand that you will be criticized. And as a police chief, you have to understand that it comes with a job, and if you're not strong enough to take the criticism, then you shouldn't be a police chief. But when individuals project information that's either inaccurate, questions my integrity, or sensationalism of different things, it does warrant a response from me. And I would like to start with the notion of the FBI Academy. Certainly, FBI Academy is a, a respected leadership conference. It is a national conference known, uh, throughout the, the world. But it is not, and I repeat, it is not the end-all, be-all of leadership. There's a leadership training that's called Senior Management Institute for Police. It's sponsored by the Police Executive Research Forum out of Boston, on a campus of Boston University. When you look at a lot of job descriptions for police chief, some ask for you to have that, FBI Academy, or different sources of police training. When you look at my resume, Senior Management Institute for Police is on my resume. The other notion is that I have committed a crime. A blast went out accusing me of hacking one's email. And the attack on me referenced the fact that another training that I have, it's called the, um, it's the FBI training called Leadership in Counterterrorism. And in this accusation that I committed a crime, it linked my FBI training to this particular, uh, allegation that I hacked one's email. But what I would tell you is, if you look at the agenda for this training, it has nothing to do with any type of computer, uh, software, or any type of training to hack emails. And so I, again, I introduced these ideas just to, uh, present a, a platform that, again, inaccurate information is portrayed on you at, at times. But again, I am a strong person, a strong police chief, but those few things, uh, do warrant a response. So I allow, thank you, this body, for allowing me the opportunity to clear some of those, uh, attacks on my character, uh, at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief, we appreciate that. All right, um, anything else, Fred?
Um, a, a couple, uh, just other, uh, comments. We, I will seek an opinion. Uh, the nonprofit, I have been working with them for eleven years in my capacity. My predecessor had appointed me as his deputy, uh, to serve in that. Um, there is a legal opinion going back to prior attorneys that, as a private nonprofit, their meetings are, are, are private, and we'll get that opinion. Uh, obviously, if someone feels the need to challenge it, they certainly may, um, have that desire. Um, as council does have one seat, and the other, the other seat is, is to the city administrator and/or my designee.
Madam Attorney?
Nothing on this portion, but there is a close, uh, session at the end of the evening.
I'm sorry, just to get the prayer, we used to go and back this up where you did. You're, okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Uh, just a reminder, good evening, everyone. We do have an election on November fifth, um, and we have twelve candidates vying for four positions, and we'll also have a, uh, mileage countywide for Oakland Community College. So, I don't want to be long, when it, uh, next, in two weeks, I'll have some more detail about our election timeline. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Treasure.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to put a reminder out to the, uh, audience that we have a tax, uh, tax bills for the summer have gone out. Uh, they are due officially August thirty-first, but because it comes out over a weekend, and with Labor Day, we've extended the deadline to September third. We will accept payments either in our Dropbox, or at the counter, or online. And, uh, all those methods are available on our website. You can get a listing, uh, how to pay your taxes at taxes.cityofsouthfield.com, or you can call the treasurer's office, two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-five-two-zero-zero. And, uh, also, I just want to also remind our senior citizens or, uh, handicapped, disabled population, veterans, uh, that they'd be able to qualify for a deferment if their household income is below forty thousand dollars a year. Uh, applications for the deferments are accepted until September fourteenth. So we encourage our, uh, anyone that can qualify for that to take advantage. It allows interest, uh, interest-free payments to be made all the way through February. So, uh, if you know of anybody that can qualify, please let them know. Thank you very much.
All right. I'll let it take a motion to go into closed session.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum. We go into closed session. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call? Or do we need a roll call?
We can, it's fine. Brightwell, Ficassi, Frazier-
Yes.
Morris-
Yeah.
Taylor-
Yes.
Mandelbaum-
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes. We're going to closed session.